Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Brad Davis is the pastor at Northwest Christian Center. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand at this time?
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your presence this morning, for allowing us to gather in this place to conduct business here for our city. We pray, Father, over our mayor and our council members, that you would bless them, that you'd give them wisdom as they lead us, and helping our city to grow. We pray, Father God, for your presence to be here and among us. We ask you to bless us and keep us, and may your face shine upon us, in Christ's name. Amen.
Place the flag. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will start this morning by bringing up Doug Dowler and his team that have been working on, I would say, a most unusual project, at least unusual by historical standards. I assume ever since the city began, it had a printed budget, and access to that budget was probably very, very difficult in the beginning. And through the years, there's been more and more interest in seeing the budget, more and more transparency involved. And now, we have transferred into an age where the citizens of Oklahoma City actually help us design digitally ways that the general public can access the budget and make it more applicable and make it more accessible to even more people. So, believe it, code writers out there in Oklahoma City actually helping us design this project. So I'm going to hand the microphone to Doug and let him explain a little more.
Yeah, what we've got here, these are some of the folks that have worked with Code for OKC. It's our local branch that's related to Code for America, and it's a group of people, volunteers, who are interested in helping promote civic technology, civic engagement, and bring people a little closer to their local government. So we've got Peter B., Matt Chandler, and Jeremy Green here that are -- okay, I want to make sure I had it right -- that have been some of the key folks on the group, but probably about maybe 15 to 20 folks have been helping with this over the last year and a half. And what they put together, we've got a little view of it on the screen, is kind of an overview of our budget, and it gives you a way, you can kind of click down in and see what are the different aspects of our budget, if you want to see, maybe perhaps within the fire department there. What are the big pieces? Fire operations, the biggest piece, you can see then, drill into that, how much of that's EMS versus operations versus suppression. Then you can even drill into that to see about salaries, health insurance, overtime, those sorts of things. It just gives you a kind of a quick, easy way to take a look at what are the parts of our budget and what make them up, in a way that's a little more digestible than our six or 700-page budget document, that again, provides a lot of detail, a lot of information, but not easily digestible for the average citizen to take a look at. So we really appreciate the work that they've done to help us make our budget a little more accessible. I'm excited that there are people interested in the budget, and they want to know what's going on, and I really appreciate all the work that they've done on that. So, I don't know if you guys want to say anything more about -- all right.
All right, yeah. And as much as a lot of people would like to, they're not allowed to change the budget, which would be something, a very popular access point to the website. But it is allowing one more level of transparency, and when you're involved in government in the 21st century, you cannot be transparent enough. Every day, someone will accuse you of not being transparent enough, and so we're doing our best to try and keep up with the national trends and to make sure that those out there who would like more information about what we do and where we spend their tax dollars have that information. So, these are the guys behind the scenes that are working on it.
One other thought, I just thought I should give the web address. It's openbudgetokc.com. Easy to remember, so openbudgetokc.com if you want to see that.
All right. Doug, thank you. Let's show our appreciation to our staff that's been working on this great project. Now, we're going to present a proclamation for Ralph Ellison Day. And Michael's right here up front. Bring the whole crew up. Honoring one of Oklahoma City's favorite sons is an annual pastime, and this is part of the group that holds a gala event every year, keeps the work of Ralph Ellison alive, and honors a man who did so much to honor his hometown of Oklahoma City. I'm going to hand the microphone to Michael right after we hear the proclamation.
Whereas Ralph Ellison, one of the most celebrated figures in American literature and an internationally renowned writer, was born in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Whereas Ralph Ellison was the author of the 1953 National Book Award-winning novel, Invisible Man, numerous short stories, essays on jazz, literature, and American culture collected in Shadow and Act and Going to the Territory, and his posthumous novels, Juneteenth and Three Days Before the Shooting. Whereas Ralph Ellison, also an accomplished sculptor, musician, photographer, and college professor, received the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 1969 and the National Medal of Arts in 1985. And his hometown honored him in 1975 with the dedication of the Ralph Ellison Library in Oklahoma City. Whereas the Ralph Ellison Foundation is working to ensure Oklahoma City and the state of Oklahoma recognize this famed literary treasure through public events and the establishment of other Ellison-related entities such as memorials and archives that will live on beyond the centennial celebration. Whereas community partners will work collaboratively and individually to organize public events in a variety of venues to celebrate Ralph Ellison and his influence in raising awareness of the contributions of African-Americans to America's national identity and the idea that embracing one's culture is the way to personal freedom. Now therefore, Mick Corneth, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 1st, 2017, as Ralph Ellison Day in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to those that are keeping the memory of Ralph Ellison alive. Michael?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this proclamation. We're very excited. Our mission is to do good works in Ellison's name in three areas: art, music, and literature. And along with me today is some of the board here, board trustees, is Laura Massanot, Susan Owen Atkinson, Lisa Foster, Karen Jacobs, and John Salvage. He is our director of communication. And we just had an exciting gala. We had over 200 people at the Oklahoma History Center. We had jazz music, we had contemporary and dramatic dance, as well as poetry, as well as readings from Ellison's words. And so, it's just, it's an honor, truly, to continue to keep his legacy alive and to work on his behalf to make a difference in Oklahoma City.
What can people do if they'd like to get more involved?
Absolutely. I mean, you can, we would love to have you volunteer. We have many programs, a reading clinic, all our third-grade readers passed their third-grade reading test last year that we work with. We also have a In the Light Bubs Room series. There's, if you go to RalphEllisonFoundation.org, we list all our programming there, there's opportunities, and of course, you can always donate. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation. There you go, Michael. Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are on item three of the council agenda, and we're going to get an update on economic development from the president of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, Roy Williams. Roy, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Mr. City Manager, thank you always for the opportunity to be here. And as always, I understand your time limits, and I'll be brief. There's about five areas I want to just quickly touch on relative to some of the things that are going on in our community, in our organization. The first is about retaining college graduates and our career fair. Last week, we hosted yet another one of our career fairs, and we had 600 college, over 600 college students attending it. This career fair is exclusively for companies who are hiring in Oklahoma, so we don't let companies come in and poach our graduates. And we had over 100 employers who were there who were interested in keeping this workforce in Oklahoma. And we also just received some new data from the Oklahoma State Regents, which indicates that we're having some success in this area, meaning in both attracting and keeping our talent and our state graduates. We now have information about how many students stay in Oklahoma their first year after graduation, and then how many still remain five years later. And so during the 2008-2009 school year, there were in excess of 25,000 graduates of Oklahoma universities and colleges. Five years later, meaning in 2015, 62% of those graduates are still in the state of Oklahoma, and 60% of those graduates are in our region, in Greater Oklahoma City. And of all the PhD graduates, 95% are in our region from across the entire state. So, we're increasing the number of college graduates, and we're retaining those graduates in our state. That continues to be a very high priority of ours. Not only does it help in our diversification efforts, but it also ensures that the workforce for tomorrow, for our growing companies, remains here. A second thing I want to mention is the legislative session, both here in Oklahoma as well as in Washington. With the session being underway, we're really focused on a number of priorities there, and probably the key priority is working with our legislature to adequately fund pay increases for K to 12 educators across the state. And as all of you know by what you hear and see, this isn't going to be an easy process in the current budget environment, but we do think there are ways to this end, and we're going to be there making sure that that happens. We also are fighting to retain the performance-based incentives that we have continued to use to be successful in not only recruiting companies here, but diversifying our economy, so that's a very high priority. And specifically, the Oklahoma Quality Jobs Act, the aerospace engineer tax credit, and the historic building rehabilitation tax credit are those that are very critical to our ability to be successful. And they're constantly under fire, there's bills out there to eliminate them, but we have to have them to be competitive. We've also actively formed a coalition around opposing legislation that would significantly expand the right to carry guns into high-impact events. That legislation continues to sort of rear its head, and we have a lot of events in Oklahoma City that are, that contractually prohibit weapons, yet there are bills that would still cause that to happen. We're also working on a number of different bills regarding criminal justice and sentencing reform, and those have stemmed from our initiative here in the county on the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Reform Task Force, as well as the governor's task force. So, those particular initiatives have created the need for some legislative changes and some significant changes at the legislature as it relates to our ability to reduce jail population and prison population. I mentioned DC. On May the 3rd and 4th, we're planning our annual DC fly-in. Especially with a new administration, it's important to get in front of new officials that are now in DC, as well as at the Pentagon. And so, we will be meeting with each member of our congressional delegation, and we'll also be meeting with Air Force and Department of Defense personnel. I already mentioned criminal justice a moment ago, but I want to expand a bit on it. We are actively pursuing the recommendations from the task force that was created, and we've also created five different work groups to actually implement what the task force came up with. So we're working on governance, we're working on facilities, we're working on implementing the 29 recommendations. As I just mentioned, we're working on legislation, and we're working on public engagement. I've also not been in front of you really since our task force had its press conference and completed the initial recommendations. And I want to reiterate what I've said many times, and that's my thanks to you, Mayor, to Jim Couch, City Manager, to MT Berry, and to Chief Bill City, all four of who served on the task force. This work that's being done, and the emphasis that you all bring from leadership positions are very important to us having some success in this area. And as everyone knows, these challenges didn't develop overnight, they're not going to be solved overnight, but I think that we all understand this is a process, and we're all working through it. Fourth thing I want to mention is our work on the Innovation District. A real top priority for us right now is the completion of the study that we have undertaken with the Brookings Institute and the Project for Public Spaces. We will be announcing in April that that study has been completed. We will be holding an event. In anticipation of that work, we've already seen a lot of collaboration among a number of different technologies across industries, and that typifies the kind of activity we want to see. So be looking for an invitation to each of you to attend these meetings in April. The last thing I would mention is that our prospect activity is on the rise, meaning new projects coming to Oklahoma City. We typically see a rise following a presidential election, and so this cycle is really no different from what we sort of thought would happen. And just as an example, we had four different companies here on site visits in a two-week period in January, so it's really good to see that now picking back up. This is a sign now that companies are beginning to pull the trigger on projects instead of just planning them. And as you know, our unemployment rate remains low, and fortunately, we still have a lot of companies who are looking to our, so we're going to continue our talent and our workforce expansion efforts. I'll conclude with that and be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions for Roy? David?
Roy, going back to the legislative section of your presentation, if it was concluded that to be able to provide some of these changes, such as increasing teachers' compensation, if the conclusion was the only way to do that was to increase taxes, would the chamber be supportive of that position?
We wouldn't know specifically what the proposal would be, but our fundamental belief is however it's paid for, it should be shared. There shouldn't be a single industry sector, a single business sector, or a single consumer sector that should be picked on to do it, that it should be across the board. So, we would certainly, we know it's got to be paid for, we know it's got to come from somewhere, we know we have a revenue problem, so we would certainly support that.
Well, I agree with your position about not targeting a particular industry. I think the state has relied much too long on the oil and gas industry, for example, to subsidize a very low tax spectrum across the board, if you talk about real estate taxes, income taxes, the other various forms of taxes. We are substantially lower than most states, but we've been able to get by with a undue burden, an unfair burden on the oil and gas industry. If you look at gross production taxes, the income taxes, the excise taxes, they truly fund a lot of the operations of the state, and it's, at this time, I think, we need to look at all of our sources of taxes and say, to be able to achieve certain services provided by governments, whether it's state or local, we have to start paying our fair share of those taxes.
Yes, we concur with you. The problem is, is there's not much appetite in the legislature for a tax increase, so it's going to really be tough, plus it requires a supermajority of 75%, and that's a big hill to climb.
No, I agree 100%. I think some of our legislators need encouragement, you know, because I think they're concerned that people just automatically hate taxes, but yet, from our perspective, when we talk with our clients, they're not opposed to paying their fair share, whether it's individuals or businesses. So, there's a misconception, I believe, at the legislature that everybody's against increased taxes. I think if they can demonstrate this is what it costs to provide these services that most people agree are necessary, people are willing to pay their fair share. Thank you.
Meg?
Roy, what can we do, and those watching today, what can we do to help focus this effort on teacher pay raises?
Well, you know, there's a lot of different options on the table out there. There's everything from incremental increases over multiple years to large increases immediately. I think, right now, it's just sort of pay attention, you know, to what's being debated out there, and continually tell the legislature, this is the time to do this. Figure it out, that's why you're elected. And I think, as is often the case, the voters are way ahead of the elected officials in this issue. People want to see this happen. And how they do it, I don't know that we really care, it's just got to be done. So, our intent is to go out there and encourage them to find whatever path they can swallow to make it happen. We're not saying it's got to be done this way, and this is the only way we'll support it. But figure it out, and we will give you the cover if you need it to make it happen.
The completion of the Brookings Institute study you mentioned, I'm interested in that. When will council be able to see a copy of that?
Of the Brookings Institute study? It's mid-April when they come here and actually present it. We're going to have about a two-and-a-half-hour-long program with Bruce Katz, who is our lead consultant and the author, and they're going to lay it all out, and that's when it becomes totally public.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Ed?
I was going to see if you could touch on three things. One is, I think this is the last time you'll be here before we come up with projects for the economic development package on the GeoBond for the September election. And you talked about the way quality jobs incentives that the state uses to try and diversify the economy, giving incentives. And when we did it in 2007, we had a $75 million package, we did the same thing. We basically write checks if you do, create a certain amount of jobs, a certain income. I'm wondering if there are alternatives to that, assuming that you can preserve the state incentives, so you've got that money to give companies. Are there things that we can build that are more permanent, more innovative? I know Pat Ryan lobbied 10 years ago in MAPS to have kind of an incubator or some kind of innovation hub. You've come and you've talked many times over the years about the need for ready-made space, warehouse space. Is there something that can be built, that can be put on the ballot, that can help small businesses with economies of scale getting started? The one thing is, I've talked about Dirk Spears and the very innovative company of electric vehicle battery regeneration, and the way that they needed, I think they struggled to find warehouse space, I think they're still maybe struggling. For innovative businesses like that, that are getting international notoriety, is there something that we can do, maybe that we can build that's more permanent, that would be here 20 years down the road, that we could put on this economic development package?
Well, this is not an official recommendation, but it's something that has been discussed a lot, and it's relative to the Innovation District. You know, what we don't have is sort of a place where innovators can come together. And a number of communities do have that. And at some point in time, and we already know it from Brookings Institute, it's really critical to have places that people can congregate who potentially are the next commercialization agents. And while I'm not really advocating that we go out and build a building, at some point in time, we do need a building where you have like a makerspace, where you have places where entrepreneurs can come together, where you can have mentorships, where you can have people who can do angel seed capital pitches, who can talk to entrepreneurs, things like that. We have a dispersment of that around the community, but the more you can concentrate that into one space, the better. And some communities have made significant commitments in doing that. So it's certainly an option. I would not suggest the city get into the spec building business and compete against the private sector in it. Some small communities do that, but generally, large communities don't, because they have an active development sector out there who tends to fill that void. But it doesn't mean that at some point in time, to get a specific company located, you might have to do something different. The city before, or at least like Oklahoma Industries Authority, has built buildings and leased them to companies. So there are tools out there, and there are institutions out there that have been created that can do some of this stuff, if they have the resources to do it.
But you wouldn't think building, buying land, maybe on a rail line near the airport, building warehouses, that kind of, getting that ready-made, you wouldn't think that...
I mean, that's a very speculative business.
Right.
And there probably could be wiser investments of that money and convince the private sector to do that somehow, through incentives, or through a partnership or something like that, but I'm not sure the city really wants to get into building spec buildings.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to ask is just how we grow our renewable energy business? How we make people, how we grow into a more comprehensive energy city and energy capital, not just oil and gas? And whether, no matter what you think is oil and gas, I think there is a possibility not to demonize oil and gas, but just the economics aren't necessarily going to be there in 10 years. You've got solar now creating more electricity generation jobs than fossil fuels, oil, gas, and coal combined. Hundreds of thousands of jobs that we're not really getting here, good-paying, stable jobs we're not getting here in Oklahoma City. The head of Ford saying the electric vehicle revolution is, this is the beginning of it, and that in eight years, you're going to have double-digit percentages of electric vehicles on the market. I'm just not sure how Oklahoma City, how the oil and gas sector is going to take that kind of shock to the demand side of the supply and demand equation. And it just seems like we need to diversify into all kind of energy. So, one example is Dirk Spears. We have this hospital, if you will, for electric vehicle batteries. It's gained international notoriety. You have crates of electric vehicle batteries coming to Oklahoma City from Europe and Asia, and it's very exciting, and that's maybe an inroads into that economy. But he just sent out an email blast. He said Spears New Technologies is proud to be based in Oklahoma City. We're proud that in just two years, we've generated more than 55 jobs, we've expanded into three buildings, we've invested millions of dollars into equipment, we grew over 500% last year, we have engineers attracted from Detroit, Korea, Japan, Europe, China. We even started to export battery packs to Japan. But then, in response to the legislature passing an electric vehicle tax, and the question I have to ask myself after two years in Oklahoma, are we welcome here? Did we pick the right state to start something new? Did we pick the right state to become leaders in lifecycle management of advanced battery packs? I don't know. And that, I feel fear when I hear him put that out to everyone, because he has looked to be a leader in that field. How can we make them feel welcome? How can we let them know that this is important to us, that we want to, that all energy is important to Oklahoma City?
Well, I mean, we've met with him, we've talked to him, we've assisted him in some of his expansion. Most of what you're alluding to is a legislative issue.
Right.
And a tax increase as well, things that we've been trying to caution the legislature on, on doing those kinds of things, because what is being proposed at the legislature is a very, very small revenue source on a specific industry like that. So, you know, we're talking to legislature about that, we're talking to him about that. The other thing I would remind you of, though, is the proliferation of the wind industry in Oklahoma. I mean, it's not in Oklahoma City, per se.
Right.
But we've probably grown that green industry faster than any other state in the US. But the problem with that, it's not hardly any jobs.
Right.
It's one-time capital investment, so it doesn't do a whole lot to create employment opportunities.
But solar is very, I mean, very job-intensive, a lot of construction jobs, very good, is there a way we can grow that industry? I mean, we have the sun, we have the weather, we have the need to diversify, is there a way we can grow that?
Yes, and there's, I think, a lot of efforts underway on the part of the state, as well as some of the economic development shows that we go to. Those are companies we're talking to.
Okay. The last question I wanted to ask you quickly, with the dysfunction at the legislature, anytime you see something from the left and the right, I take notice, but see of like Kevin Calvi, of Mickey Dolan's proposing legislation on payday lending. I think every city in Texas, with the exception of Fort Worth, has some kind of city ordinance kind of regulating their payday lending business, and we have a lot of that in Oklahoma City. Do you have a thought about some of that legislation, or whether that could be looked at at the city level?
I mean, we're happy to look at it. It's not something we've really focused on, but I'm happy to look at it and kind of see what Representative Calvi is proposing.
Thank you.
Pete?
Roy, when I saw you on the agenda today, I realized this is a
Roy, when I saw you on the agenda today, I realized this is the last time I'll have an opportunity to talk to you.
No, there'll be other times.
In this format. And I want to tell you that despite the fact that you and I've had some obvious differences about things in the past, how much I appreciate what the chamber does for Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
You do a really good job of representing us on a world stage, and I think you probably don't get as much credit as you deserve for what I personally consider the renaissance that Oklahoma City's had since the mid-'90s. I thought, after the last couple of questions, I thought perhaps a softball would be a good way to end this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Can always use those.
Roy, just one other question. Since you and Ed were talking about the Innovation District, and I know the chamber sponsors trips for business and government officials can go out and see how successful other cities have been in certain areas, certainly Pittsburgh would fall in the area of a city to look at from a technology standpoint. But I think the general area of the Silicon Valley, however we want to define that, the reason I bring that up, we have two clients who are involved out there, and the striking difference out there is the level of assistance between various businesses. If they have a technical problem, engineers from Apple will work with the engineers from Google, and especially with much smaller, less developed companies, to help them get up to a certain level of success. And I'm sure we have it here, but it is striking, apparently, how much assistance goes on out in those types of communities among the various organizations that are at times competing against each other, but they'll certainly come to their assistance in an effort to gain that next understanding of new technology. So just a suggestion.
Well, in that line, that's exactly the product of the Innovation District. It's to bring different kinds of companies, different kinds of disciplines, who all have an interest in something, whether it is things such as sensors, or imaging, or IT. Each company has those needs within their own organization, but they don't necessarily know how other companies utilize technology and whether that technology can be applied to their industry. And that's some of the plans that we have, is bringing all of these companies together to talk very specifically about applications that maybe can be cross-industry, and they can learn from each other.
And, you know, going back to your original statement about how we've improved our ability to retain our college graduates, again, we've got a few clients who ventured out there, and they would love to come back to Oklahoma, but the technology that's out there and just the, you know, feeding off of it, they're just not in a position to. But truly, I think if we expanded the Innovation District, not that the biotech healthcare is bad, it's good, but let's expand it into software development and other forms of technology, I think it would really help the city and the community. Thank you.
Ed, to answer your question about the increased demand for electrical cars in the future, I'm hopeful that the natural gas industry, the oil and gas industry, will be able to provide natural gas to ONG to meet that demand. So I'm optimistic in that regard.
And I think, you know, the legislature provides incentives. I mean, I think that's part of the, it provides incentives for ONG. The problem with CNG is it has to be compressed. It has to be at a high pressure in the vehicle, and then it has to be at an even higher pressure to get... So in terms of electricity utilization or energy utilization, it's not necessarily efficient as electric vehicles. I think that's the argument against it.
I agree with that, but the selling of natural gas to plants to produce additional electricity to meet the demand for electrical cars will help this state.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And hopefully replaces coal completely.
Roy, thanks.
Thank you. My pleasure.
At this time, I'd like to move up item 12A. This is an effort from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation and the Oklahoma State Forestry Service. They have been working on an interesting process, and everybody should come up, I believe. I know we have a handful of people here who have been involved in this process. But in general, through a grant of the community foundation, we have been able to document and analyze and locate all of the trees inside our park system. And it's an exciting project, and Nancy was right there at the forefront of it. Nancy, good morning.
Thank you very much. And maybe at the end, I'd like for this to be more than trees, but let me just say, back in 1991, the community foundation received a bequest from a lady by the name of Margaret Annis Boyes, and it was the biggest one, the biggest ones we'd ever received. And it was really interesting because there were only two lines in the bequest that said to take care of parks and trees and medians in Oklahoma City. So in 1991, a million dollars, there were lots of other things you could have done besides take care of trees, but that's what she wanted to do, and so we started about that. And there were two things that happened that I think were really significant. First of all, by having a source that we could say to neighborhoods and people in the community, we would like to help you do some beautification projects and to plant some trees and to do some other things. I mean, people came out of the woodwork. It was amazing how much interest there was and how much pent-up demand there was to do that. It was kind of incredible. But secondly, it also gave those neighborhoods and groups of people something really positive to focus on. So it really had a significant impact on neighborhood building. That kind of trend went on for, in 1999, probably the greatest thing we did was hire Brian Doertie, and we really upgraded our whole process by bringing somebody that was a professional in that landscaping business to maybe upgrade how we did this. Later on, in about 2010, we moved on and really started focusing beyond the trees, more than trees, and looking at parks and how the spaces were utilized. We worked with OCU and later with the Trust of Public Land to develop, with the city, a comprehensive park plan, which really became the parks part of the Oklahoma City Comprehensive Plan. So here we are in 2015. Doug Cooper says, you know, we really have this opportunity to look at our trees in the community in a way that's beyond anything that anybody else has ever done, which you'll hear about in a minute, and basically to do this inventory. So this is more than trees because it really reflects the community foundation and the community's commitment to everything that we're doing with respect to our parks and how they're utilized. So I'm going to turn this over to Brian and let him give you more specifics, but I think it's kind of exciting in a little bit different way, kind of nerdy, but, you know, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you. I think we just, we have the Margaret Annis Boyes Trust. It's been operating for the last 25 years, but I think we're just, fast forward, in 2012, together with the city of Oklahoma City and the national consulting firm of Wallace Roberts and Todd, we went to develop a long-term funding, maintenance, and improvement for the community's public parks. The consultant team conducted a community survey to help understand the current park usage and identify park and recreational priorities. The survey indicated that the city should prioritize making improvements to existing parks, including planting more trees. The Oklahoma City Parks Master Plan identified six strategic directions of growth for the Oklahoma City Park System, as well as specific action steps to move the park system forward. Recommendations included the developing of a comprehensive asset management system, the implementation of a tree inventory, tree planting, and tree replacement programs for the city of Oklahoma City Parks. The tree inventory project is one of the first steps forward to achieve these goals. Last winter, we worked with the Parks Department, the Oklahoma Department of Forestry, to identify the best parameters to use for the tree inventory. We negotiated with Davi Tree Resources from Kent, Ohio, and in May, they came down to Oklahoma with their data collection teams and started the inventory process. Every single tree in the parks in the developed part of Oklahoma City Parks had 13 data points collected on each of the trees that included species and variety, location, heights, canopy cover, and health condition. The program connect planning with geographic information systems technology to efficiently plan where and where these plants would be planned in our public park system. This was collaborated back with Google Earth documentation as well. The interactive mapping technology allows the city Parks Department to view all of this data on a screen. When Neil's out there with an iPad, he can go to any tree, can pull it up, he can see exactly what data points were collected. We can see exactly the health of the tree. We can get all the information we want to, and as they turn around and add new trees, subtract trees, anything in this, they're able to sit there and enter on the iPad. So this program is living, and it continues to go forward. What we did, the interactive mapping system, it will allow this. It's not a static. It's not 2016 and we're done. It will go on for years to be. It's the most sophisticated program that's been done for any city in the country, and 10 years ago, technology wouldn't have even allowed us to be able to get where we are. Today, some of the things that we learned, there's 310 acres or 13.5% of the canopy cover in our developed parks. The citizens said, we wanted trees, we wanted places to walk, and one of the things is, is that canopy cover, so it gives us a baseline to work from. The value of these trees, according to Davi, is $42.1 million. The nice thing about it is the majority of the trees were in good or fair condition. And I think that's one of the benefits sometimes for having storms and ice loads. You do get rid of some of the trees that are in worse condition just through the way it works. There were 185 different species with 60% of them native to Oklahoma. Eastern red cedar was the most common species, but again, when you look at it, it was nearly perfectly aged. They want young trees, medium trees, and old trees, and Oklahoma City was in really good shape. Part of this project was the environmental from it and the outcomes from that. There was 163,603 annual environmental benefits. There was 324 tons of carbons equestered, 8.81 tons of air pollutants removed, and 3.5 million gallons of stormwater intercepted. Those were very critical. When we've been in meetings with ACOG, they're very interested in this type of data as we look forward. This is just representing parks, but again, it can be layered back with street trees and many other areas. This project established a baseline of data to more efficiently plan for the tree maintenance, planting, and replacement of trees in Oklahoma City Parks. It provides interactive data and technology to help the park staff improve the efficiency in daily operations. Neil has been using this since July. Every time they go out to do something with a tree, it's recorded right then, and that comes back, and work orders can be issued through it. It enhances tree management decisions regarding species selection, distribution, and maintenance policy. It supports the city budget planning with accurate data on the trees that are required for maintenance and the number of trees that need to be planted in the future of the maintenance. It enables proactive planning to protect our trees and to incorporate new trees in the canopy instead of just waiting for the reactive. The project's potential overcomes some of the forecasting technology to estimate future tree populations. And again, there's the environmental benefit, the asset, it assists the community partners in long-term proactive planning for park and trail improvement projects. And for instance, this week, Edgemere Park's getting ready to do new tree planting around. That starts with the iPad. We're able to see exactly the condition of the trees, and then we'll move into the proactive. So it gives us something right there. And citizens can go out there now on the website. They cannot manipulate any of the data, but they can go to any park, they can see what trees there are, they can record, and it can bring up about that tree. So there's 19,000 trees out there that are all data-protected. I think some of the interesting things are that people don't realize as much. Emerald ash borer is coming in. It's been in the Northeast. It's wiped out basically all the ash trees in the Northeast. And as you come in, it has been found in Oklahoma. It was found this past October in Oklahoma. And what it will allow us to do is be proactive. We were able to pull up the data, and we were able to see that there were, I think it was 469 ash trees in the city park. Not only could we do that, we could turn around and say, okay, which ones are in good or excellent condition instantly? It told us which ones there were. We said, which ones are eight inches or above? It told us. We knew right then which ones would probably be valuable assets for us to inoculate, and some of them would be ones that we say, let's go ahead and plan for interplanting. The same thing can happen on our ice storms and our wind storms. We can go out into some of these parks if we know they have a lot of ash trees or birch trees or maple trees, weaker wood trees. We know we're going to be hit a lot harder with a windstorm or an ice event, so we can plan as opposed to a park that's more predominant in oaks or the cypress. So what it's allowed us to do is really go from reactive to proactive in terms of where we are. We are, I think, some of us that have been in this business for over 40 years and have really seen and respect what these citizens say about the value of trees, and we've been about trying to protect them, this gives us, it's a whole new game changer. When Mark and I were talking and Neil were talking, we're like, boy, if we can do this, this will set Oklahoma City so far ahead. We know we have a lot of storms. We know this, but this will allow us to be a lot more efficient. So with this, we are very, very pleased to present this. ACOG's been very interested. ODOT's been very interested. Health Science Center is likely wanting to do an inventory like this, Project 180. So hopefully in time, we'll be able to layer more of these together and be able to get just really good snapshots on where we are on the trees in the city.
Exciting project. Questions?
So I just lost a tree in my backyard. What's...
I've heard that before.
What's the most likely one to survive in Oklahoma City when I plant a new tree?
What was that? I'm sorry.
What's the tree most likely to survive when I plant a new one?
There is no perfect tree, but there are trees, and seriously, you can go in and with this report, you can see some of the trees that have long-term duration. You can look at some of the cypress and some of the oaks and some of those and say, okay, you know, it might take me a little longer to establish it, but that long-term duration is so much better. So again, we have short-lived trees, we have medium-lived trees, and we have long, and sometimes we have trees that are just a lot more prone to damage.
Just by interest, what is the oldest tree that you were able to find?
It's probably one of those at Will Rogers in the old arboretum.
We didn't really take course in.
Right.
I know exactly the age of those. I will say that a fellow by the name of Dr. David Staley from Arkansas does a tremendous amount of research on the Crosstowers Forest, which is what Oklahoma City sits in. And it's not uncommon to find oak trees that are 400 to 500 years old in this area. So I'm not saying your tree was that old in your yard that you lost, but it's pretty common to see trees. Well, not always common, but it's likely to find trees that are that old.
We were pretty impressed with the size of some of the cypress, some of the post-oaks, some of the blackjacks that we found, and the number of them that we found.
All right. Some cities are creating like tree farms, I believe. I think there was a group from here that went down to Fort Worth, maybe to see theirs. Was anybody in that group? Do you have thoughts of...
I think sometimes, but I think sometimes you have to sit there and say, replanning and being proactive and knowing that we're going to lose these trees, so back through the Boyes Trust or back working hand-in-hand with the city. My dream is that we'll sit down twice a year with the city, and we'll sit there and actually go in and say, okay, where are places we want to populate? Where are places that we want to move a shade cover from 13% to 15%? We have the data now. Maybe it's South Grand Trail, maybe it's along the river. And we turn around and say, okay, how can we make this happen, both with private money and with public, and how are we going to be sustainable? We're very proud at the community foundation. We operated about a, close to a 98% survival after five years on each of our trees. And now with this, being able to be proactive and be able to work hand-in-hand, I think we're really going to be able to make a difference. Whether it's effective to start your own tree farm and grow them, some cities do that just so they'll have that variety at that time and that size. In Oklahoma, we're real fortunate to have Green Leaf Nursery at Telequa. We have some incredible nurseries around. So you'd have to sit there and say, is it really that much more efficient for us to sit there and grow this tree as opposed to just work with our partners in our industry that's out there?
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Just thank you. It's really exciting.
Thank you.
It's a fabulous project. Very great.
Yeah. Step up to the mic, yeah.
If you would like, I could take you to a bur oak tree that is on the Oklahoma River that we have cord sampled that we know is over 200 years old.
Sure.
And it's in the shadow of downtown Oklahoma City. It's pretty amazing to see that tree still there.
Would love to see it.
I'd like you to do that.
Okay, let's plan that. All right, thank you. You bet. All right. So there's nothing to approve there. This was just for a report from the community foundation.
That's correct.
Okay. So we're on to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Oh, we have a... Oh, we have an appointment. Item 3B is the appointment of Dr. Cagle to the City County Board of Health. Is there a motion there? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now to item four. Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for February 14th. And item 4B is to approve the journal for both January 31st and February 7th.
Move the items.
Any comments or questions on the journal? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning, starting on page 20. Page 20, item 9F1. Item D, 222 Southeast 20th, we ask that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item, yeah, moving to item 9G1. Item E, 412 South Robinson, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item I, 2315 Northwest 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 21, under item 9H1. Item B, 412 South Robinson, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 222 Southeast 20th, we ask that that be stricken. New owner. And item I, 2315 Northwest 32nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
We're on to item six. It's revocable permits. Let's ask the people that are asking for permission to hold these events to come forward if they're in the building today. Item 6A is a revocable right-of-way permit with BT Concepts LLC to hold the Bricktown Freedom Music Festival on April 8th.
Hello.
Good morning. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Charles Stout. Address is 6955 Ashley Trail in Edmund, Oklahoma.
I'm Andy Cullen. Address is 7401 Northeast 95th, Oklahoma City.
All right. Tell us about the Bricktown Freedom Music Festival.
We are holding a benefit concert with John Michael Montgomery in the parking lot just to the north of the Bricktown Brewery on private property. We are looking to close Oklahoma Avenue from Sheridan to Main Street mainly for security sakes and working with the police department in the Bricktown area. Allow those fans to disperse and pass the mayor to make it kind of a festival feel. So the concert itself, the benefit goes for Warriors for Freedom and also Water for the efforts in Africa for water. So we just want that Oklahoma Avenue closed so that we can have the event and add the atmosphere to it.
And you've been working with the merchants in the area there?
Yeah, there's actually only two addresses that are on that. And it's me at Bricktown Brewery and the parking lot owner. And we're obviously in cahoots on this. But I have gone to all the business owners that, you know, even Holiday Inn across the street. Everybody is very excited for the event, have full support of the Bricktown Association. So we're excited to hold the event.
Sounds wonderful. How about a motion?
Move the item.
Thanks, John. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 6B is a right-of-way use permit with DG Productions to host the Auto Show 5K. This event would be March 11th on North Grand in Ward 6. Good morning.
Good morning. Don Garrett, DG Productions, 14420 South Meridian, Oklahoma City. This is the 100th anniversary of the Oklahoma City Auto Show. And to help celebrate, we're adding a 5K run at 8:00 in the morning. All participants get a free pass to the auto show, of course, with food and beverage after.
And where would the auto show actually be?
We're going to, actually, in the Bennett Center.
Okay.
The new building. And the run will start and end inside the building. It's going to be something kind of unique. If it rains, at least the people at the finish line are going to be okay.
All right. Meg, it's in Ward 6.
Now that we have 200,000 square feet under roof, they can have a 5K in addition to a car show. I would move approval.
All right. We're voting on item 6B. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 6C is a request from DG Productions to host the Run Lucky 5K and Mission Mile Fund Run. This event would be the next day and it would take place in Ward 6 between Park and North Walker. Morning.
Morning. I'm Rick Ailing, 833 Northwest 41st Street, Oklahoma City.
And tell us about the Run Lucky 5K and the Mission Mile Fund Run.
This is our seventh year. This is a fundraiser for the Leukemia and Thuma Society. We've been doing this for a while now and it gives everyone a chance to dress up and go run through a part of the city and have a lot of fun.
All right. If people want to sign up, what should they do?
Runlucky.com.
All right. Runlucky.com. And that event is March 12th. Thank you both. How about a motion?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 6D is a right-of-way permit with Galley Soul Food to hold the Eats on 8th. That would be the third Saturday of each month. It's in Ward 6 between Harvey and Robinson. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Rick Vick, 28, 33, Mary Go Lane, Edmund, Oklahoma.
All right. Tell us about the Eats on 8th.
It's our second full season of Eats on 8th. Appreciate council support last year. We had a successful run last year. Picked up all of our trash and maintained the area, which is very important with the city right-of-ways. We have made some changes for this year. We're no longer holding it on a Friday night. We've adjusted to a third Saturday. And we've just taken feedback from individuals in the area. And that Friday after work was a little bit of push for everyone to participate. We also worked real close with the businesses that are in the area, in the Midtown area. And we had a couple conversations with the Friday traffic with some of the businesses. So we decided in the best interest of everyone to make an adjustment and move it to the third Saturday.
All right. Thanks for your efforts. How about a motion? It's in Ward 2. No, I'm sorry. It's in Ward 6.
Move approval.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item 6E is a request with the Oklahoma City County Health Department to hold Open Streets OKC. This one will be on April 2nd on 23rd Street between Robinson and Western. And Darren Seer, good morning.
Good morning. Darren Ransley, 11124 Kingswick Drive, Oklahoma City.
Yeah. Tell us about the Open Streets OKC event.
This event is the spring event for Open Streets. It's going to be on April the 2nd. The geographic location is going to be from Robinson through to Western on 23rd. And then we go up on Walker from 23rd up to 28th, then into the Pasayau Arts District up to 30th Street.
And how many people do you expect to show up?
Last year was somewhere around about 28,000 to 40,000. We're hoping for the same number, but obviously with weather, we'll see how we go. But I think over 30,000 is really our target for this event. There will be food and beverage, which will be food trucks. There are going to be over 75 individual vendors that are going to bring an opportunity of health and wellness. Nothing will be handed out. Everything will be a learning moment for any participant that's going to be there. We've worked with law enforcement to make sure that our revocable permit is understood from each and every direction. We're making sure that the event area is cleaned up directly after, both in the recycle area and also in the trash area. It's going to be a great day to ride, walk, skate, skateboard. It's just an energy of bringing everybody together in the community for a day of 12:00 through 4:00.
And the common theme is health.
Health, absolutely.
And so families are more than welcome and a good chance to get out and exercise and walk 23rd Street without having to compete against cars.
That is correct. And also bring your pets. That's another opportunity. That's something that's becoming very big with Open Streets.
All right. Bring your babies, bring your pets, and get out and walk 23rd Street. And I'm sure there'll be some great food vendors out there as well. It's in Ward 2 and Ward 6. How about a motion?
Sounds great.
Okay. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Really appreciate our working relationship with the City County Board of Health.
Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Have a wonderful day.
And again, that effort is April 2nd and Northwest 23rd Street between Robinson and Western. Item 6F is a revocable right-of-way permit with Oklahoma City University to hold the OCU Race for the Stars. It's scheduled for March 18th. Anybody here representing this event? That's all right.
Phil McSpadden, Oklahoma City University, 6209 Landsboro Lane. Just a temporary closure of some streets around the campus to benefit the Children's Rehab Center over in Bethany. Mission statement of the university has always been to develop student servant leaders. And so we're trying to do something for somebody outside Athletic Department. So we've got a kind of a joint effort going with them. We've got scrimmage games going with those young ladies in the fall or men and women over at the rehab center. They come to ballgames, horse in the springs. We're trying to do something to help them on March 18th.
All right. How can people help out?
It's our first year. We don't know. We're hoping to get a couple hundred people to come out and run.
Okay.
All the proceeds will benefit the rehab center. I don't really know yet at this point. We're going to have a pancake feed after to see if it can do something a little bit unique and maybe get some more people involved down the road.
Well, which is success. It's in Ward 2, Ed. All right. All right. Cast your votes. All right. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you very much.
Item 6G is a revocable right-of-way use permit with Ultramax Sports to hold the Go Girl Run 5K and Half Marathon. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Members of council. I'm John Osland with Ultramax Sports, 2300 Brookside Avenue in Edmund, Oklahoma. This is the third year of our half marathon and 5K run. The second year that we'll host from the Mickey Mantle Plaza at the Bricktown Ballpark. I'm asking for a closure of the roads from Sheridan down to Reno on Mickey Mantle, having cooperated with all of the vendors and merchants down there. The event runs through the city on a circular path that gets back down to the local city. It is a women's-only event, celebrating women's health and wellness and the spirit of sisterhood. Last year, we had close to 2,000 women in with their families and kids from about 16 states. We're very excited to bring those people back to Oklahoma City and into Bricktown again and invite all of you guys who are interested in helping out. Like I said, we have tons of volunteer opportunities for the families and friends and have worked out some really nice things to do for the fathers and supporters and friends down there in the Bricktown area.
How do you promote this event?
Promote this event? We actually work with a variety of areas through the local running stores. We work through some of the local running magazines. We will be doing some live television performances or live television appearances as we get closer to the event. Mostly some print advertising and local running publications and regional running publications. Looking forward again for a third year.
Is this something of a competitive event in the half marathon?
You know, it is. It really, there is a competitive edge to it, but it is focusing largely on women maybe doing this for the first time. One of the things about bringing a women's-only event is in the crush of a big competitive event, maybe many women feel a little intimidated about getting out there. Or maybe if they have not done this before, they're less inclined to get into a large crushing competitive event. We have found that in this event, we have five of them across the country in the central Midwest. I'm based here and we're very excited to have this one here. But it's with a women's-only event, women are more inclined to try this for the first time, either in the 5K distance or in the half marathon distance. We work with Run Hers, which is a local women's running training group with Red Coyote, who does a lot of the running training programs. And the key, this year again, we're very pleased to be also partnering with Stevenson Cancer Center, focusing on some women's-focused health and wellness programs ongoing. So we're looking forward to developing that relationship. But the key is to get people running, particularly women running, and to develop some relationship groups with them to keep them running, not just this one time a year, but all three a year.
All right. This event is March 19th. Probably a good training for the Memorial Marathon, which would be just over a month or just exactly a month and a day after that. It's in Ward 2, Ed. No, it's in, yeah, it's not just in Ward 2. It's a half marathon. It's in Ward 2, 6, and 7. All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We're recessed the council meeting, convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are two items. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Four items. Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust with two items. All right. We have a motion in a second. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right. If we have a second? All right. Any individual considerations on the consent docket?
Mr. Mayor, 7AM and 7I.
And Mayor, if I could, 7R and J2.
I would like to comment on J2 also.
All right.
AN like Nancy.
John, I think you were first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to actually ask for 7AM to be pulled and voted on separate. But I do see that we have the school district here and I want to learn more about this $10 million.
Brent, I wanted you to come up and give us a, this was actually an allocation set aside for out of TIF 2 for the taxing agencies within the district. We allocated some money to a number of the taxing agencies almost two years ago on it. And this is one of the allocations that was set forth. This is for $10 million to be used for the administration building at 615 Classen.
That is, that is correct. Today, we're seeking to allocate funds that through the process a little over two years ago. Superintendent Aurora Laura is here along with Scott Randall. And they have a brief presentation on this, on this project. All right.
Good morning, Aurora and Scott. Welcome.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. I'm Aurora Laura. I'm the superintendent for the school district. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott Randall to do our quick presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Cornet, city manager, couch, council members. Just a couple of reference points before we get into the presentation. Our district admin building is currently located at 900 North Klein. It's in a facility that was constructed in 1922 for use as a middle school. In 1955, the district converted that to the administration building. So we've been housed in a middle school for argument's sake for 62 years. So with that, jumping into the presentation. Looking at the timeline, we actually purchased 615 Classen, March 31st, 2014. You see the purchase price, $2,300,000. MAPS sales tax was the funding source for that. Shortly thereafter, we had a feasibility study that was completed. Shortly thereafter, we had a feasibility study that was completed, and we came in front of the city council on December 8th, 2014, asked for a million dollars plus, as far as TIF funding is concerned, it was approved. Later, we came back, August 16th, as Brent mentioned, came to the TIF Review Committee and asked for an additional $10 million for the renovation of 615. So it's been, for argument's sake, 18 months that I've been waiting to come here and ask the city council to approve this $10 million funding source for the district to complete the renovation. You see a couple of other points on there. March 21st, there was funds that remained within the sales tax budget for the administration building. It was approximately $1.5 million, the board and the city council approved the reallocation of those remaining sales tax funds from the admin building to other projects. The primary beneficiary of that was the Capitol Hill High School. It was to complete the paving of the road that runs behind the high school between the Future Senior Health and Wellness Center and part of the parking lot there. And so today, we stand before you on February 28th, asking that the city council approve our request for $10 million. Looking at the renovation project timeline, we have GSB under contract as far as for the project is concerned. That was a selection process that actually goes back to 2011. They were originally selected through the MAPS project office. That selection was initially for the renovation of 900 North Klein. The rough estimates, working off of my memory on that, the rough estimates for the renovation of that were approximately $14 to $16 million as far as to renovate Klein, the building that we're in today. So with that, that was not feasible. We did not have the funding within the MAPS sales tax to be able to complete that project. So we began to look at other options. And so, GSB, we carried that contract over from 900 North Klein. We also continued to work with them as far as 615 Classen is concerned. And you see the timeline above, it basically calls for nine months as far as design work to get to a final design, final plans and specifications, we'd go out for bid, and then the construction timeline would take approximately a year. So roughly, a 23, 24-month timeline as far as when we would expect to be actually office in 615 Classen. Looking at some conceptual designs that have been put together as far as with GSB and just working with us internally, I'll first focus in the middle section where it has the building totals. You see the facility under the conceptual design would be able to house 233 employees. It includes a new construction area of 10,980 square feet. So working on the left-hand side of the page with the overview of the facility, you see the facility that runs from left to right, that's the initial building that exists today. You see the new construction that we would add that would include conference rooms and a multipurpose auditorium for our board meetings and for other events that the district would be able to host, would be able to configure that room in different formats, different ways to host different types of events. Moving to the right-hand side, you see the expansion or expanded view of the new construction. Again, you see the multipurpose room, you see the additional office space. I'll point out that the arrow on the right would give us a secure entrance, a single point of entry into the facility, so we would be able to control or secure access for both board meetings and for our workforce. Starting at the bottom of the page, we're going to work from our basement the way up to the fourth floor, the third floor. Within the basement, you have on the left-hand side, you have modular workspace, mechanical, we would have the IT server room located in the basement, along with storage, training rooms, and a break room. Moving up to the first level, you see where we're going with modular furniture, making advantage of the natural lighting that exists within the building. We would have our areas that are highly customer service focused on the first floor. You see the renovations as far as the bathrooms is concerned. Level 2 is somewhat of a duplicate, again, continue to work with modular space, office space, as far as, again, taking advantage of the natural lighting that exists within the building. And then I move to the third floor, which would be where the superintendent, her executive team, and administrative assistants would be housed. Looking at the Classen, 615 Classen project budget, we have the ADDG cost estimate that was provided on April 11th, 2014, of $5.1 million. It included an additional construction of $1.7 million, $1.8 million. Since then, we've expanded the square footage of the additional construction to house our auditorium and the additional conference rooms by an additional 2,500 square feet, so we've increased that budget an additional $500,000. You see the FFNE, the admin building relocation cost. We've looked at the server relocation to move that from O'Brien Research Center, which is directly across the street from 900 North Klein, of $1 million. And then we have an 11.4% contingency slash change order for a total budget of $11,073,000.
All right. Comments or questions for Scott or Aurora?
Couple of questions. How many employees are at 900 North Klein? What happens with 900 North Klein? And were there other options besides this location that were considered? And can you tell me about them?
Okay. First, the number of employees that are currently at 900 North Klein is going to be approximately 150. We've downsized that over time because of the condition of the facility. We've actually had to move staff out. We decentralized our operations. So we currently have staff that is in four different schools right now that previously used to be housed at 900 North Klein. We'd like to centralize those back into one facility. As far as 900 North Klein is concerned, we would, we would look at declaring that surplus property. The district would not have a future use for it as far as the location of the facility itself. Other facilities that were looked at as options, we did look at other facilities around the district as far as, again, looking at vacant properties. Our vacant properties are going to be school buildings. Part of what we're looking at and part of the attraction for 615 Classen is the fact that we have an office building that's built, designed, and would be built out for office purposes. When you look at 900 North Klein, even though we've been in it for 62 years, it's abundantly clear it's a school building. It's designed to house students, it's designed to serve students. We haven't transitioned that well, and that's a very expensive process to transition from a school building into an office building, and these are support functions that we're providing out of our admin building. So we, after evaluating that, working with our board, we felt the best option was 615 Classen.
Scott, if I could, on that timeline that we showed earlier, there was a point in time when that building was declared surplus.
Yes, there was.
We certainly have bounced around some on the decision to use 615 as the admin building. Are you at a place where you've really settled to think that is the right spot? And, you know, these dollars were recommended to be allocated by the TIF committee a couple of years ago, and so here we are today, and I just want to be really sure that we've settled on the right space for you and for the city.
Yes, and I'd go back to the vision that the board had when they originally made the purchase of 615 Classen. It was to maintain the presence in downtown Oklahoma City. It was to have a centralized location, again, to serve all of the district, so that we wouldn't be out in one community or another, or another, one section of the city or another. And so, we are returning to that initial vision that existed and having, again, an office building that supports office functions. We moved away from that, and there was some sentiment that's, that's no longer with the district, that did not see 615 as a viable option. So, that's no longer an element, and we see, again, support from the board, alignment with superintendent, as far as moving forward with this project.
Kind of a technical question also. You're going to move your server, your IT operation from?
If, if we can work that into the budget, yes. We would like to relocate from the Brian Research Center.
Putting it in the basement, I mean, it probably is the best alternative, but we do have some flooding issues in that part of town. I really caution you to talk to folks and make sure that we've got that handled. The city's had its own experience with losing a lot of our IT equipment in 100 North Main, so please be cautious.
Thank you.
All right. John?
For years, there was a plan to have the entire administration at Northeast. So, have you all abandoned that plan? And will all administration staff that's currently at Northeast move to 615?
Yes.
And what happens, because, and I guess this is something the Northeast Task Force will talk about on Thursday, but what happens to Northeast once the school district decides to close that school?
I'll take the first part of that, and then I'll defer to Aurora in just a second, but in terms of moving the staff, we currently, that's one of the schools that we have decentralized some of our staff that previously was housed at 6, or 900, I'm already calling it 615 Classen, so I'm ready to go. That was previously at 900 North Klein. We have decentralized, and we have approximately 30, 30 staff members that would, should, should be housed at 900 North Klein and will be moved back into 615 Classen.
The district has not made a decision to close Northeast High School. We are waiting for recommendations from the Northeast Task Force, and we're also analyzing all of our schools across the district and looking at schools where enrollment is low to see if our budget's going to require us to do some consolidations, but we have not made final decisions. What we have heard from the community is that they would like to see Northeast preserved as a school, so we will, we are open to suggestions or considerations, but we will move our staff out of that building.
Now, one thing I do want to correction, make a correction on, from the task force meetings, the task force will not make a recommendation to what schools will be open or what schools will be closed. Your chief of staff said last week that that decision will be made by you and not the task force. That's what was told to the task force on last week.
Thank you. And I would actually like to clarify our school board votes on making decisions about school closure. So what ultimately happens is I make a recommendation to our school board, and those decisions are made by the board. What I'm saying is we actually have not made a decision, and the statement was made that we had made a decision to close Northeast, and I'm just clarifying, we have not done that.
But I will.
All right, David?
Will this, will this, will this project require a street closing?
No, we are not requesting that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Ed?
If, if we're done with, with this topic, I just want to thank you. I got a text from you on Friday night, presumably to all the Oklahoma Public Schools' parents, and it reiterated your commitment to prohibiting discrimination against, for all groups, and you included sexual orientation in that text, and I just want to tell you how much it meant. There's a lot of anxiety from the Godzilla of preemption bills, if you will, that came out of the legislature, and now it's been whittled down to preventing municipalities and other entities from, from making commitments like that to, to all communities. And I just, I just want to tell you how much it meant to me, and I've talked to a lot of people who felt the same. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item? All right. Thank you both for coming down, thanks for your work. Look forward to seeing that project. All right, Meg, I think you're up next with item R.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Sure, I've got two things I wanted to talk about. If I could do, yeah, item R. I am thrilled to announce today that February 28th is the Acceptance Day for the Quiet Zone. We actually have approval from the railroad, and so they've asked us to give them a little bit of leeway for the next two days. They have to get the word out. Eric, if I'm correct, they need to get the word out to all of their engineers and make sure all the programs are correct. But by Thursday or Friday, we should have a sealed railroad corridor between Northeast 23rd Street and Northwest 16th Street. This has been eight years, eight and a half years in the making, and I want everybody to go down and eat outside at Iguana and all the restaurants where we've had to stop conversation for years and years. You now will be able to have a burger at S&amp;B and not have to pause your discussions. So, thank you, Public Works, for your determination to help make this happen. It's really taken a tremendous effort. There was a large public, Jim, you want to talk here?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, the, the work was done through 16th Street, but there are no other crossings up to Wilshire, so in effect, we have a, a quiet zone that goes from South 25th up.
Third, roughly.
All the way up to Wilshire. All the way up to Wilshire.
It, it will make a huge difference for folks that live and dine and work in that corridor, and our staff has just been so determined and kind of dealt with every setback. But I also need to thank Mickey Clegg in particular, and a lot of the private citizens who raised over $600,000 to contribute to this effort. City contributed, we used some TIF dollars, but it's been a major effort, and hooray for today. It's a really, really exciting day. And then I just briefly wanted to mention on J2, these are some street resurfacing repairs and sidewalk work at 87 different locations, and I searched and searched the list, and one of them is in Ward 6, and it's number 87, but it's a great project. It's at North Classen, between 13th and 16th Street, which very much needs to be resurfaced. So I was excited to see that project.
And then on, on that same project, there, Ward 1 has a, has a number of them, there's two neighborhoods that are getting their, pretty much all of their residential streets repaved, and it's North Haven and Brookhaven West are the two, are the two Ward 1 neighborhoods. And I really wish this, I would have known that this was on the 2007 Bond project while I was going through those neighborhoods door knocking, because I would have had, I would have had a lot better answer for them, but I, I actually didn't know that they were on the, on the list, so it's good news for them.
All right, and I think I cut John off before he talked about his second item. Item I, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 7I is a resolution approving a funding agreement with Metropolitan Better Living Center for $450,000 for, of FY 2016, 2017, community block grant funds for community development public facilities. And what this is, is to rehab a adult center located at 1407 Northeast 10th Street. So I just wanted to point that out, and I do see Metropolitan Living Center here, but I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I'm sure it's a good cause. I'll also draw attention to the fact that those community development block grants are potentially on the chopping block at Congress. So if, if you care about projects like that, you should contact your, your representative in Washington. Let's see, who's up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's see, we got John and Meg. I think Pete's up next with item B.
I, I just wanted, first of all, I'd like for this vote done separately also.
Which item is that?
It, BC.
BC, okay.
It has to do with the additional $159,000 to the MAPS Senior Wellness Center, the first one. Some time ago, the MAPS Advisory Committee passed a resolution saying that we weren't going to permit add-ons, update, upgrades until such time as the, the projects were completed. And my concern is that, you know, we talked about when we ran the first, when we ran MAPS first, we talked about four or five wellness centers. If we manage our money properly, I think there will be an opportunity for a fifth wellness center. What I'm worried about, as, as tax revenues decline, this is something I was going to ask before the meeting, and I need to ask it now. As, as tax revenues are now below target, are they below the MAPS target? I know they're, I know they're below the fiscal year 15, 16 target.
On the revenue collections board?
But are they?
Yes. You're talking about the 2009 projection?
Yeah, the projection that we made when we passed MAPS.
Month by, first of all, we have a, a pretty sizable balance, as we talked about before for previous. So is the question, as we're going forward for the last eight months or nine, or 10 months of the project, are we below our original projections?
Exactly.
We're above by about $30 million, just on the.
No, month by month, right now, today, for the March, our, our, our February check on MAPS3, is it above or below our original projection back in?
Is that your question?
That's my question.
Yeah. So I'm not sure on the February. Do you know on February's, if it was?
The, the collections based on last year's projections are less, but, but we're still 4.5% of, of the program is ahead of collection.
I don't remember on that.
I know that. Month by month, we're very close, and I'm not sure whether we're up or above, but we're not reaping the benefits. We earlier reaped on it, so it's narrowing down.
If we're at breakeven or slightly below, then that contingency is going to decrease over the next several months.
Right.
That's my point. I don't know where the.
And I think depending on what happens on the sales tax, you know, through the end of the year, the expectations are, we'll see it improve next year. Right, right now, because of where we are, we've gotten to that point that it is very close, and we've actually had a couple of months where we dropped down a little bit. I think the last one I saw, last report I saw, we were at about $30 million above the original projections for, through February.
You make a very good point, Tom. And then the fact is, we've had a couple of months that have dipped below in the last several, but it's pretty flat, and overall, it will not have a significant effect on our overall ending balance.
Yeah, well, I think.
My point is, if it doesn't dip below at all, that eats into that contingency, that, that fund balance.
That's my point, yes.
Well, I think there's only 11 months left of the MAPS3 tax, too. So it, you know.
But if it ate into it at half a million dollars a month, that's five and a half million dollars. I mean, it, you know, half a million here and half a million there, and soon you got, you got some money. But my point is that I thought that there was a resolution passed by the, the MAPS Advisory Committee that said that we wouldn't be doing add-ons for anybody until such time as we had a better handle on what the total was going to be.
And this was discussed last week at the MAPS Subcommittee. The MAPS Subcommittee on Wellness Centers, there was not a quorum, and that issue was discussed, the pros and cons of it. And then it was taken to the advisory board on Thursday, and it was recommended for approval.
Well, my, I'm just not sure it makes sense to add to any project until we get to the end of the line and see where we're going, because I would hate to, for this to not, to, to create a situation where we couldn't build a fifth wellness center, for example, or where we couldn't do something that, where we weighed every, every add-on and we weighed the relative value of each add-on.
What, what's the number here? What's the cost of these?
$159,000.
So you're talking about 1%?
I understand.
Okay.
It's the principle I'm talking about.
Pete, you're talking about $159,000 versus $10 million for the facility. And the only thing, may I say one thing? I'm so sorry, but I, I've been out there several times, and I've met with Dr. Halsey and Bill Fleming, and I've walked the building with them, and they've showed me their concerns, and some of them are safety concerns in the gym, where we don't want people getting injured. And so, I think these are really necessary, and I'd encourage people to vote for this just because we want a safe facility. We, we want a facility where people can go enjoy themselves and be safe.
It, it was my understanding that it was based more on putting the facility in, in a position where it can earn revenue to, to, to maintain itself.
There are.
My view is, they selected the wrong model to start out with. The, the healthcare model is a much more, is a much better model, the one like the one that in the south part of Oklahoma City is being built, is a much better model if your concern is where you're going to get the operating revenue, because the healthcare model generates operating revenue through providing healthcare.
And, and there are some encouraging things that are in the works for healthcare at that facility, and I'm really excited about them, and we will be announcing those in the next few days. But I would say this, that Bill Fleming has looked at this very, very closely, and he's not trying to come up with some amenities that are unnecessary, and, and I think that in the best interest of having a good facility that runs well and that is safe, these need to be voted for, please.
All right, but we will pull that item, Pete, for you.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that my, it's my point, it's not that, that's not necessary. It is that it's not an emergency, and that was what the original decision was, if we're going to do add-ons, they had to be emergencies. I can see the streetcar having the same kind of things, I can see the park having the same kind of things, and this is $150,000, but it's just, you know, $150,000 here and there and pretty. soon you're, again, got some money.
You've got some real money.
Real money.
All right. Larry?
Just as a recollection, Mayor, didn't we also approve an add-on to the Whitewater facility after a year of operation?
We did go back and, yeah, an item that was originally cut from the budget was put in over the winter.
This is not the first time we've done that.
No, it's not.
I know, but it needs to be the last time, is what I'm saying. They need to quit doing it if we're going to do the whole, all the projects.
And on our agenda today, we're adding a four and a half million dollars for a new, for another streetcar also.
That is also on the agenda.
I mean, we, I, can you imagine the potential for add-ons at the convention center? Just think about that. I mean, the appetite that the convention center will have for add-ons. I mean, just let me leave that thought with you. Because I think, I won't be here to be saying this, but somebody's at the end of the line, there's going to have, somebody's going to have to prioritize this appetite and do it. And I just want to make that point now.
Okay. James, I think you're up next with item T?
He covered it.
Okay. Ed?
Quick question on AN. We're doing $90 million for the GEO bond, which is a big number historically, isn't it? I mean--
It's ramping up.
It's ramping up in time. We're going to be seeing numbers like this as we go on.
So, how, what makes that possible?
What makes it possible?
That we're able to sell so much of this? Is it property values?
Well, as bonds are retiring, it is in a uniform debt service out there. The bonds are retiring, but it's also an increase on the overall sense valuation of the county.
Right. And it'll keep still, it's with that goal of keeping the property tax rate at about 16 mils, and will still, even with a $90 million sale, probably be just a little bit below that.
So, it's not that property values are rising, is that bonds are being retiring?
Well, the bond, the property values rising helps to provide that additional, I mean, it increases the amount of revenue that you'll have, so that's a factor.
Okay.
But if you look at the projections we talked about at the GEO bond meetings we've been having, we've been talking about numbers annually in about this range.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the entire docket. I'm going to take that motion to exclude those two items.
Okay. And we have a presentation on the convention center.
Oh, okay.
And--
Where's that?
That would be item AZ, the preliminary report on the convention center. And we have, Adam Pulich is here from Populus, and as he's coming up, I also want to highlight an item on BA. BA is an amendment to the Jacobs Contract regarding the modern streetcar, and a part of that was to take a look at autonomous vehicles as we go forward. And I want to be clear on this, that the amendment, it's in the packet, includes that, but because of timing, because of the MAPS Advisory Board, Subcommittee met on Wednesday, the Advisory Board on Thursday, it's really tight for us to get those. So, they recommended not to go forward with the AV portion of that recommendation. And so, you can discuss that after we have the presentation, but I wanted to make sure you were clear on that. It does, because we just didn't have time, because we load these up before the meetings are actually there, so we don't have time to, the agenda's already well in process before the MAPS. So, it isn't that we're trying to influence anything, it's just our own internal processing.
All right. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's good to see all of you again. So, this has been a year in the making, at least for this portion of the project. And I know that we've met with you multiple times over the course of the past year, and so nothing you see today should be new. This is more the conclusion of a year's worth of work and coordination effort with multiple people around the city, parties, our Subcommittee, Citizens Advisory Board, and of course, our MAPS team over the past year. So, you know, we kick off every presentation with our design principles, and this is something that we created over a year ago with our Subcommittee on what it means to build this building, to design this building. And I think when we all drive down Robinson today, and we see all the construction happening with the park, and all the site clearing happening, it starts to make these conditions more real as we move forward in this process. So, it's something that's really exciting for us, and we mine these principles, and we use them to influence the design, and we will continue to do this until the building is completed. So, you know, constructing a building of this size is no singular effort. Over the past year, we spend quite a bit of time in Oklahoma City developing relationships with all parties around the city, not only the Subcommittee, but the other consultants for the other MAPS projects. We've even gone as far as met with OKCPD, the Fire Department, Planning, Public Works, all parties to make sure that a building of this scale will function within the city. The building operator is on board. We have met with them multiple times to make sure that the design is checking all the boxes for them, and of course, relationships with you all in the City Council, and making sure that we're all on the same page as we designed this. So, here we are, preliminary report. We are still maintaining the full program of the building. We haven't had to sacrifice any of the program that we promised the city back when we signed the contract. So, we have 200,000 square foot exhibit hall, similar to the new Bennett Center, which just opened a few weeks ago. And then we have the 45,000 square foot meeting room and the 30,000 square foot ballroom. So, again, still maintaining the full program of the facility. You know, this entire time, we've been talking about what it means to build a convention center in a previously undeveloped part of town, and how these facilities can function and be good neighbors. And there's a lot of things happening between the park, the future hotel, the streetcar, that, you know, is important to us, and we just want to make sure that our building is being a good neighbor within this event district. So, these next two slides, basically, this is the design evolution. A lot of fun and good thought has gone into this, but it's important just to see that this was not created in a vacuum, and there was a lot of input from multiple parties as we developed this design. So, these design drivers, you know, we keep thinking about these as we go through the project, how pedestrians enter the building. We have entries that relate to the hotel and the streetcar. We have entries that relate to the park. We have entries to the south to accept parking and to further address future expansion. The way that the building is oriented frames views to downtown. It also protects the building from the elements, that's sunlight, that's wind, that's rain. And also developing a building that is 600 feet long north to south, so it was important to develop something that was comfortable, that had pedestrian-friendly scale, and also something that could be expanded easily when this convention center is successful years down the road. So, the building lays out. We have our exhibit hall on the ground, 200,000 square feet, like I said. We have a portion of that meeting room program on that level as well. We have another significant portion of the meeting room program on a mezzanine that's about 26 feet in the air with the views out to the park. And then we have our ballroom and our remaining meeting room program on the most upper level of the facility. All said and done, you'll be about 50 feet in the air with great views over the new park, views to downtown, and basically framing some of those interactions that you can have along Robinson Street. When developing this with our Subcommittee, it was important to design a level of flexibility with the facility. The convention and meeting industry is always changing, and it was important for us to develop a building that could adapt to these changes. So, each of the program areas has an inherent level of flexibility designed into it to allow for flexibility in selling the building, flexibility in operating the building, and essentially future-proofing the building to allow for successful meetings to happen as the building evolves. For example, the exhibit hall is 200,000 square feet, as I stated, and it's divisible into four smaller exhibit halls, each with its own amenities, and back-of-house access and front-of-house access. So, along those lines, you'll see that basically in all the program areas throughout the building. The main circulation happens in main atriums. These are triple-height spaces, approximately 80 feet tall, and you'll see that in some of the renderings, but developing a clear circulation pattern in a building of this scale is obviously key to the success of the facility. In formal spaces, the, you know, the saying, the meeting happens after the meeting, the deal happens after the meeting, developing these more casual, technological, friendly spaces where people can meet during events. I think we've all been to conventions where you have no place to sit down, so developing these kind of spaces are key to add to the attractiveness of the building. In food service, we've been working closely with SMG, the building operator, on how we address food service in this facility. It was decided that there will not be any private retail space in the facility that the food service will be from an operator perspective. And so, that will be addressed with the main kitchen that's adjacent to our ballroom in a series of portable food kiosks that can be distributed around the facility and allow, again, that flexibility of designing events around the building. Click through the plans. And the design story, as we developed this with our Subcommittee, just being geographically located in the center of the quarter shore plan, it seemed natural to use quarter shore, earth to sky as our philosophy. Not only did that influence the architecture, but it influenced the materials that we chose for the building, some of the images that were important to us through the process and how we developed the building form, how we modulate light and the opacity of some of the materials. So, this diagram here, as we look through it, it's a progression of something that we did together to see how the program has laid out and how it really does influence the architectural form. It's a simple design methodology, form follows function, and if you can stick to that over the design of the building, you know, it really leads to successful architecture. So, we'll walk through these images, then we can talk about the materials that were chosen. So, this is looking south on Robinson Street. This is our main atrium that we're looking at, and you can see the roof of the ballroom and the 5,000 square foot terrace that overlooks Robinson Street and the new downtown park. This is a view standing in the park where you start to see some of the architectural forms that start to differentiate, the different program inside the building. And when you think about earth to sky, because of the lack of high-rise development behind the convention center for now, you really do see how the building kind of transcends into the horizon. Again, looking south from Robinson, this is our northernmost meeting room pod, and this is also where we have planned for the potential connection to the hotel. This will be an elevated connection. But again, we have developed that into our design plan. Obviously, we will keep coordinating that as we move forward in the design process.
Thank you. That was going to be my one concern, and I really appreciate seeing it from this view, but there will be some kind of access on that north side of the building.
Yeah. So, we, you know, it's a highly debated topic right now within our Subcommittee, and we, as the architects of the convention center, have put forth our best effort in coordinating that and accepting it. We're now in a position where we are dependent on the hotel picking up the receiving end of that, of that bridge, right? So, I think there is just a little bit of question on how it would be financed and how it gets built. However, from our perspective, we have accommodated that in our design.
And so, on the most simple basis, if it's not a bridge or a, will there be a door? I mean, is there accommodation for at least a door on that side? I mean, if, you know that my concern is if the parking is northeast, to have to walk all the way around to the west side is--
So, we'll get into one of our alternates. Again, that is dependent on coordination with our new neighbors to the north. But how do we further foster that relationship from the hotel to the convention center and to any kind of potential parking that's happening to the northeast of the building? So, it's not only a convention center thing, it's now a district item that's up for coordination between all the parties that are at play, so.
Excuse me. May I ask for just a little bit of clarification? Is this the renderings that we have with us, are those the final designs? Have they been approved?
Yeah. So, these are, this is the final design for preliminary report. This has been obviously coordinated with the Subcommittee and Citizens Advisory Board, but also Downtown Design Review Committee, as we've met with them, presented to them with approval, positive, positive approval, I might add. And also with Planning and Public Works, continual coordination with them. And there was a whole host of comments that we received from all of these parties regarding the convention center, and we've now addressed those comments and met with individual parties to ease any kind of concerns that they've had with the design.
Well, from my perspective, it looks great. So, I just wanted to clarify that this is probably going to be the final product.
Anything that happens from here on out would not affect the design integrity. This would be refining, material selections, you know, finishes and look and feel, but as far as the overall design, this is where we're at.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. So, again, implementing a lighting strategy to allow for the building to transform at night, something that could possibly correspond to a thunder victory, a wedding, or any kind of OU or OSU, or some kind of championship that we have happening around town. So, implementing these lighting strategies on the exterior of the building to give it a life of its own is important to us. The new view, we call this the gateway, looking in, when you see the development to the park to the left, and our building to the right, and the coordination of the Project 180 street scape between the park and our site is key to just creating this gateway into the city. It truly is a new vision for an area that really looks nothing like this today, so. And then again, looking north on Robinson, I want to call attention to two of the materials. The underside of this terracotta stone material that you see is actually a natural wood material. During our coordination with various parties, we elected to stay away from a more, you know, typical metal panel condition, and the park and the architecture around town lends to more of a natural palette. So, this is where we developed this strategy to, you know, provide a more, you know, cutting-edge design, but use a palette that we're all familiar with around the city. So, this image from Shields, this is actually as Shields is elevated as we come in town. I want to point out that we are actively trying to screen and hide all of the mechanical and rooftop mounted equipment, also the loading dock, knowing that this is a back-of-house area. We know it's important that this is still a gateway to the city, so we want to make sure that that stuff is hidden and out of view. And again, the aerial of, you know, all of the projects around town, quite significant when we think about the park, Robinson, the hotel, and then the streetcar. And this is an actual rendering, standing on the balcony, and you see the views across the park to downtown, and obviously, Skydance Bridge and renovated Union Station. So, to protect the building, we're using a series of architectural moves. We call these passive moves, and so, we have a northwest orientation, deep overhangs. We're losing hot, we're using highly protective, low emissive glass to protect all of the interior finishes and the people inside, solid surfaces, shading and prints on the glass, and obviously landscaping to provide that protection on the pedestrian level. The material palette is a combination of terracotta, a natural material, which provides us a little bit of that differentiation in the color. We have an exterior wood veneer. Obviously, the glazing, we'll be using textured concrete and plaster, and then some insulated panels, metal panels, to reflect the sky on the roof of the ballroom. I'll walk through a series of these interior shots, just so you can see how the interiors are developing. Again, this was an effort that was coordinated--
Excuse me, just one point, not to be too critical, but there doesn't appear to be much of a south view, and especially with the Skydance Bridge. Any thought about that as far as windows?
Oh, so, we, if I can go back to this image?
I mean, I'd want to look at the entire river, but at least the Skydance Bridge.
So, the view from this southernmost stack of meeting rooms, it was designed and oriented this way, and you can see the way that the glass is angled at the corner of the building. That was in direct response to pushing those meeting rooms up against the glass and to allow for those views to be framed to the south, knowing that, knowing that it was important. However, because of the orientation of the building, we had to angle the building a little bit to the northwest, just to add that level of protection from the sun. But we took some architectural moves and some liberty to carve away those corners to further expose those views to the south. So, while you're inside the building, you will have these framed views to the south, not as panoramic as you would to the north, which north is more friendly, right, for windows and natural light.
Where you come from.
So, we've, we feel like we've addressed it. However, it's, might not be as apparent from some of these renderings. So, from the inside of the building, again, using a palette that corresponds to the exterior, something that's modest with more natural tones. And as you go up the building, we've used a natural palette at the base, and we've gone to more of a metallic and reflective palette as you move to the ballroom, the earth-to-sky concept. So, this is the main atrium to the north. This is standing on the top of the escalators. You can see the ballroom at the top of the image, and there will be dynamic views from open glass out to the park and to the south from this north atrium. this north atrium. An image to the inside of our meeting room pods, you can see how the meeting rooms are grouped together with the informal seating space directly adjacent to them. Some more of the informal meeting room space. This is the southernmost atrium, standing there in the triple height space, looking out to the park. Another one of the informal meeting room spaces. Inside the meeting rooms, with the meeting rooms pushed into the glass, allowing those views out. All of the glass in these meeting rooms will have blackout conditions to further modulate the light and allow for the room to go dark in a presentation situation. This is our, one of our flexible junior ballroom spaces to the south, particularly this area right here is the one facing south, where you will have those views out to the south and to the Skydance Bridge and to the Union Station from inside the building. And this is our ballroom level, the arrival. And I want to call out the set of three 30-foot vertical lifting doors that provide that transition from the inside of the ballroom space to the pre-function and out to the 5,000-square-foot balcony. So essentially, you're taking a 30,000-square-foot ballroom and allowing it to grow all the way up to 45,000 square feet and allow that interaction with the exterior of the building, a view from inside the ballroom. So over the course of this, we were tasked with deciding what we were going to do with the new central utility plant. It was decided that we will allow for the central utility plant to accommodate our building, the future expansion of our building, and to allow for the arena's central utility plant to move into our building in the case that the Koch Center is later demolished years down the road. So this is important because what this did is it added square footage to our building. There's a lot of study in this, a lot of coordination with local energy providers on how we would do this, but just important to bring up that this was something that did affect our project, and we've incorporated it in the design. The building has three key exterior signs. We have one to the north. That's where we have the OKC buried in the ground. To the south, we have the shadow sign. And then to the southeast, we have halo-lit letters framing that view coming in from Shields. The exterior and interior of the building, because of the relative size, we're using a series of these pylons that carry digital information. This will be an interactive system that will be updated from a central point located in the building. Each room in the building will have a digital sign, again, that's located at a central location, allowing that flexibility in the branding of the spaces and what's happening inside the meeting rooms. In the landscape department, we talked about the coordination of Fourth Street. Again, this is something that is ongoing. It's going to be developed with our relationship to the hotel. We have an alternate drawn as something to use as a placeholder until the hotel team gears up and we can start further coordination with them on the relationship of Fourth Street. And that will address some of the stuff, Meg, that you said earlier on interaction and entries and parking and all of that, and so. And to the south, another alternate that we studied was the design of a surface parking lot. This is identified as a favorable location for that, for then, when the building does expand, you are not taking away any kind of infrastructure. The exterior of the building, obviously, will be having a natural palette, places to sit, protected places for people to gather along Robinson, being a good neighbor to all of the spaces on the other side of Robinson in the park. Our local, our local designer for our landscape, he is actually responsible for the Project 180 design, so he's extremely familiar with the plant, plant palettes, the articulation of the streets and sidewalks. And so it's been a great opportunity to work with him and further incorporate these principles into our project to make sure that they do fit in with the city.
You're not going to put any ash trees in, are you?
No.
Okay.
And so in coordination with our subcommittee, we were tasked with addressing north and south vehicular flow along Robinson. And we developed three options. However, it was decided in our subcommittee meeting that because of the nature of all of the projects happening around town, that this is less of a convention center-specific issue. This is more of a challenge for us to coordinate with the park, the hotel, the streetcar, and any kind of future development on how vehicles will circulate this new district. So you'll see that there's an amended, an amendment in our resolution, and that is just us acknowledging that we will keep coordinating this traffic and circulation flow. And frankly, it's something that will probably, you know, be talked about until the duration of these projects, because with infrastructure this large, it's going to be constant communication between all of these projects to make sure that we're addressing the issues. So cost estimate, over the course of preliminary report, we have an independent cost estimator that has been monitoring the entire design. Also, when we submitted preliminary report, ADG, the MAPS program manager, did another independent cost estimate of our project. We then sat with both cost estimators in a room for about three days and reconciled our cross-cost estimates. We're happy to say that our project is within budget right now. That's not necessarily saying that there will not be changes because of the economy and inherent levels of contingency, but for being essentially, you know, 50% through design and to have an estimate that says we're on budget, we're extremely happy about that.
Speaking of estimated cost of construction, do you know how our costs here in Oklahoma City might compare on a national or regional basis to construct some type of facility this large?
So it's interesting that you say that. So there's a lot of factors that go into that. Because of, because of the scale of this project and the delivery method has a lot to do with that. A national firm like a Turner or a J. Done or something like that, they kind of shy away from these projects as far as, because it's not a design build or a construction manager at risk delivery, right? So we're trying to be very careful on how we draw and design this stuff, because this will go out to an open bid. And we want to make sure that the contractors that are bidding on this are absolutely qualified to deliver a project on this scale.
Yeah.
So you, you wonder, and this is something that's going to be covered in our contingency, is it going to be a national contractor that is going to come in and bid this project? Or will it be a conglomerate of local contractors? And what work is available at that time for the local trades versus a national trade? And so there's, there's just a lot of back and forth, I guess you could say, of those relationships. And if it's an all-local person, you can maybe see costs rise, because there's a lot of work happening around town from a construction perspective. If it's a national, they have a little bit more flexibility to driving costs down. So it really goes into the bidding process and how they, they come in and bid a project of this scale.
Okay. One other question. In Oklahoma, we have like two windows. They run from about the middle of March to the middle of June, and then from about the middle of September to sometimes as late as middle of November, to where we can have outdoor activities, and either it's not too cold or too hot. Will there be the ability to have activities on the roof of the convention center?
So not actually on the roof, but we have the 5,000-square-foot balcony that is substantial enough to have substantial events out there, but nothing on top of the roof. We actually shy away from larger outdoor spaces on the roofs of buildings, because then you do lose that protection from the elements. And so we try to design in more of these exterior spaces so they incorporate better in the design.
Well, you certainly have a much better perspective. I was just thinking in terms of having a more, a wider view of things if you did allow activities up on the roof. Thank you.
Since we're talking about the roof, I have a question. I mean, there's clearly a movement in convention center construction to put solar panels, large arrays of solar panels on the roofs of convention centers.
Yeah.
Anaheim has probably the biggest one, which is 20% of the electricity for the convention center comes from their solar panel array. But Santa Fe, Los Angeles, Anaheim, Portland, Salem, Las Vegas, Ontario, Houston, Austin, Puerto Rico, Indiana, Albany, New York. I mean, do they even have sun in Albany, New York? I mean, there's clearly, this is the trend. Has this been looked at? And if, I mean, is this something that we can add on later, or has, are we locked in with this design?
It's a really great comment. And Anaheim is actually one of our projects, and they have recently installed all the solar panels onto their existing building. And it was through a city program, because just of the expansive roof planes that you have in these facilities. And we actually met with the Department of Sustainability here in Oklahoma City last week. They had some comments, this exact comment specifically, on if we can implement solar panels on this design. And so the, the quick answer is yes. There are opportunities on this building to either do some kind of solar retention. There are certain areas that are better suited than others. You certainly probably wouldn't plaster the entire roof, but you can design areas that can accept it, and we have, have done that. It's not in our base budget to actually provide the solar panels, but it is something that can be added on to the building. Also in discussion with the Office of Sustainability was just the actual roof color. By going with a white reflective roof, you reduce, you reduce the heat gain inside the building as opposed to something that's more of a natural stone or ballast or dark roof system, so. And their order of, pecking order of sustainability, they said green roof, which is quite expensive structurally. They then said the ability of solar panels, which there are, is the ability for solar panels. And then they said a light-colored roofing material, which is what we provided.
So is there anything, like, do you tell me what you have to do in moving that if you were going to try and do solar?
Without putting my electrical engineer hat on, it would take some integration into the system and plugging back into the grid, depending on how the energy is used, whether or not it's used in the building, or it's something that is just sold back to the city as a credit and being put back onto the grid. So there would have to be some decisions that would be made as far as how you would collect and where that energy would go when you would do the solar.
So how would you study that? I mean, how would you, would you just?
It would just be, it would be a study that we would do as far as our mechanical and electrical consultants. It's something they would do like an art return of investment or a lifecycle study on how they would implement that. And there's costs associated with each method, and you would just look at the options and see how you would do that.
What would be a ballpark figure of what a study on solar would cost?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head. I would be cautioned to say something right now.
From the...
Yeah. But it is something that is possible, and we do, we do do it in facilities.
Why don't you put together a cost estimate for us, just so we'll, we'll know long-term?
Absolutely.
And the cities that you mentioned all have much higher electrical costs than what we are, and so it's going to greatly extend the, the time period to recover our costs here, just because of the savings that we would achieve versus what you'd find in Anaheim and those other locations.
Would Austin and Houston have higher electricity costs?
Yes. I think Oklahoma and Oklahoma City has one of the lowest electrical costs in the country.
I probably need to get moving on.
Yes, and so, thank you. Just, I know it's long-winded, but it's a, it's an important project, and it's been a long time making, so thank you.
We appreciate your work, and you can tell there's great interest from the council on this project. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Two items have been asked to be pulled, so I'm going to take the motion and second for the rest of the docket minus AM and BC. So at this point, we're voting.
BA.
BA was asked to be pulled?
Well, BA is a, the Thomas Ford.
Okay. Yeah, we, we probably should have the discussion on BA as too. And I know Jeff Bezdek is here from the, from the subcommittee on the streetcar. Jeff, you want to come up? As, as part of the, as part of the, the streetcar project, there is a, a, a cost in this item to study the advantages, disadvantages, cost savings long-term on having our streetcar system made autonomous. And, and so I know the, the subcommittee is, seem to be generally favorable, but there was nuances going on in the meeting, and it didn't come out with, with an up and down vote. So Jeff's here to kind of explain his view, yeah?
Sure, Mayor. My name is Jeff Bezdek. I'm at 1015 North Broadway, Suite 120, here in Oklahoma City, and I serve on your MAPS III Transit Streetcar Subcommittee. Which item do you want to start with, Mayor? Do you want to start with the additional streetcar or this automation study?
Well, I think we're good on the additional streetcar.
Okay.
I think it's, just because there wasn't an approval at the subcommittee, I think it's specific that we...
Sure.
Dial in on that, and just so everybody is, is clear, that we're not moving forward on implementing autonomous vehicles into the streetcar, that system, but we are going to study it. That's, that's the point.
The proposal in front of you has the original language that came before the subcommittee. You can certainly move to approve the resolution as it currently stands, which would provide additional monies to Jacobs Engineering to study the possibility of autonomous streetcar operations. The committee was split on this issue because more or less a timing issue in our discussions. As you know, we have a slight surplus in our funds due to the rail project coming in under budget, which is unheard of in the United States, by the way. And I'd like to point out that I think that's due to, to good oversight and good input. And we're, we have the privilege of coming later in the project, so we're able to look at other cities and what they've done successfully and wrap those into our project. And so the discussion was, can our committee do studies? And we have set a precedent in the past by studying the Adventure Line District, how to extend to the northeast side, and how to extend over into Health Science Center. And so the discussion was, there are other areas in the city that have further developed in the nine years we've been working on the project. Can we evaluate other expansion? And the MAPS III staff suggested that it was not in our purview to do any sort of study. So we, we, we were kind of undecided as to how to move forward, and we, we let that go and moved on further into the meeting. And then the autonomous vehicle study came up, which may potentially reduce the operating cost of the streetcar system in the long-term and prove to be of technological benefit to not only our city but other cities. And so the subcommittee said, well, if we can't vote on evaluating how to expand the streetcar system, then we shouldn't be able to support an automation study. So the vote was, well, essentially that part of the proposal was removed. So I think there's general consensus, we would like to study all these items, how to expand the streetcar system to the northwest, the plaza, down to Capitol Hill, through the Farmers Market District, because those areas have developed more. And the consultants seem to think that the automation of the streetcar could have major positive revenue effects to our system long-term, but they don't know what those are, because they need permission to go ahead and study them. So while I'm only a subcommittee member of one, I can tell you that further direction from the city council would be helpful, and I'm sure that our committee would be more than willing to accept any dialogue from you.
All right. Jeff, thanks.
Can I ask for David for clarification to Jeff's point? On AZ, we're directing the architect to further study access to the proposed convention center hotel. I mean, that would seem to be studying an expansion of the convention. I mean, it's outside the convention center. Can, can we study?
Now, what they were asking about was to further study how the interaction is between the hotel and the convention center, and that access in there. It's within the project that they're doing, and it's not a new, new project.
Okay. I mean, it just, but it's not strictly the convention center. I mean, it's, you're studying the interaction with a private facility.
Well, the comment was made is how close the door was to the hotel and how far the walk would be, and they, they agreed that they would look at that some more, about maybe moving a door around or something like that. Or, as was mentioned in here, a, a bridge or a covering or something like that. That's the further study.
Okay. So can I, are there efforts looking at autonomous, the impact of autonomous vehicle on, on public transit, not just on streetcars, but on buses?
Yes, yes. All of that's probably going to be here sooner than individual cars are, are working on. Yeah, Larry?
I'd like David to speak to this. Back in the old, old days of putting in computers, we always had people who always wanted to enhance the system, enhance the system, and enhance the system. And the solution always came of putting in a system for ease, saying, from this point forward, we're not going to consider any more enhancements until we have the original system in and operating. Is that still a feasible engineering approach today? And if, if yes, does it apply to studying these different items before we get, you know, the, the system running? And we just don't get into a, a loop where we're continuing studying, studying, studying all these additional enhancements?
Well, certainly what I'm concentrating on right now is finishing the, the streetcar that we have. car that we have under construction, so that, I, I would assume that is still a common strategy.
But it, it's kind of like a laser printer that you, you get a nice laser printer, but then you figure out you have to pay for the ink over and over and over. I mean, eighty percent of our operations costs are the people driving the, the vehicles. And so figuring out ways that maybe we can decrease our maintenance costs, which is now estimated maybe four and a half million a year, would, would seem to be very important.
Ed, I agree with that comment. I think that by itself would warrant the study, and it, it's not that expensive of a study in comparison to the potential savings that the city could achieve by moving that direction. One other benefit that sometimes we overlook, just the attention that brings to Oklahoma City, that we're the first city to begin studying this, I think is tremendously important because we're always trying to, striving to bring in that next, you know, big employer, and for them to gain that perspective that, hey, we're always looking to improve technology in our community, I think speaks volume, and, and by that itself, I think that's money well spent, but certainly the potential savings, which could be, in some estimates, a million a year. I'd say let's move forward.
I, I would agree. I think it's really important to move forward with the study. It certainly doesn't say we're going to do it on day one.
Right.
And so I think we're running David's, you know, no pun intended, but on David's track to get the street car up and running the way we promised, and at the same time, anticipate whether or not we might be able to take a driver out of the car and do something different. So I would support moving forward with the study.
All right, so why don't we vote on the consent docket, with the exception of those two items that have been previously pulled. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, why don't we vote on AM, John, which is the one that you asked to be pulled? We're voting on item AM, and this is the item that has to do with the TIF money for the school district, just for, to remind the, the council. Need a motion and a second on this item.
Second.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. And then Pete asks for item BC to be pulled.
BC.
B.
Oh, BC.
All right.
Second.
We have a second. We're voting on item BC, and it passes eight to one as well.
He can talk under citizens.
Let's move on to the concurrence docket. Is there a, a motion on the concurrence docket?
I move the item subject to individual consideration.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll move on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward Eight. The address is 15124 Latens Court. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance on final hearing for an ABC two application. Happy to say it's for a, a new Ted's Cafe Escondido and near Northwest 150th and Penn. There are no protests, and I'd move the item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on item 9A1. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward Six. It's an ABC issue at 1630 Northwest 23rd Street. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a Samurai restaurant on 23rd Street, and it also is a request for an ABC permit. There were no protests at the Planning Commission, and I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward Four at 7720 South Sherwood's Boulevard. It's currently I-1 light industrial and R-MH2 manufactured home park, and it would become a new I-2 moderate industrial district if approved. It's in Ward Four. Pete, are you okay with this?
Yes. Is anyone here speaking opposition to it? No, if there's no opposition, I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward Eight at 19500 North May. It's currently R-1 single-family residential, and it would move into a R-1 ZL single-family residential zero-lot line district if approved. Mark?
Yeah, this is an ordinance on final hearing. As you said, it's an application to rezone to R-1 ZL single-family. It was approved by the Planning Commission, and I'm not aware of any protests, so I'd move the item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on 9A4. It passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward Two at 7009 North Klassen Boulevard. It's currently R-1 single-family. It would be O-2 general office. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak?
No.
It passed unanimously and no protest. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward Three at 2100 South Sarah Road. It's currently in a PUD, and it would be a new PUD if approved. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up?
No, sir.
I'd like the applicant to come forward. This has been a lengthy situation.
I could do one.
Also, to reiterate to the public, some of the concessions that were negotiated, make sure that everybody understands exactly what is in this particular zoning request.
All right, David?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application for a PUD on the old Westbury Golf Course. Council will remember when we came here approximately a year ago, we, we did have quite a few protesters, and we were able to get it approved through some concessions that we made at that time. Fast forward to today, we needed to come in with a new PUD and essentially flip the development. What we had proposed on the west side, we now have proposed on the east side, and the first thing we did was we sat out to meet with the neighbors, to, to let them know what was coming, so that they could give us any feedback they had. And one thing we committed to early on was all the commitments that we, we reached in the original PUD that allowed for the neighbors to come on board, we kept those. So what we have here was a, a reduction in density from 250 units to 200. The main point of contention was, because there is the word multifamily, the neighbors wanted to ensure that there wasn't going to be the traditional apartment projects. What we've done is, on any multi-story unit, we have language drafted into the PUD that would not allow one family to be living on top of another family. Certainly, a, a family could have a two-story unit, but it would have to be their own unit so that they would have a two-story unit. The neighbors were comfortable, Planning Commission was comfortable that that was the language that would prohibit what they were worried about. So with that, when we arrived at Planning Commission on this item, there was no protest similar to what we have today, and ultimately Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item unanimously.
An example of an applicant and the neighbors working together, making some compromises, and allowing us to get to this point. Unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A8. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A9 is also in Ward Three at 1704 North Meridian Avenue. It's currently R-1 single-family residential, and it would be put into a new SPOUD if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak to this? Seeing no protests involved, I would move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone want to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Yeah, we skipped number seven.
Ah. All right, so we passed six, and we, now we've passed eight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item seven is in Ward Two at 5644 North Penn. It's currently O-1 limited office and O-2 general office, and it would become a new SPOUD if approved. This is in Ward Two near Penn Square. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak?
No.
Okay, so nobody, nobody's here that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, Councilman, no. We did meet with the neighbor several times, leading up to the, the Planning Commission hearing.
Okay. I, I just want to publicly thank Janice Powers, who's the Planning Commissioner. Just, she's a real estate attorney and just did an incredible job. I really appreciate putting all the agreements into, into this, and, and she's done a great job. I know that there's confusion, there's disagreement, I think, within the neighborhood. There were a lot of protests, but I appreciate everything being incorporated into the agreement. I know some of it's not legally binding, but, but it's, it's appreciated. If nobody from the neighborhood has, has come to speak to this, then I'm going to move for approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, now we're on item 9A9, which is a zoning case in Ward Three at 1704 North Meridian. It's currently R-1 single-family residential, and it would become a new simplified planning unit development if approved. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak to this? Seeing no protesters, this was approved by the Planning Commission. Unless the council has some questions, I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A9. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward Five at 11200 South Penn. It's currently AA agricultural, and it would become inside a SPOUD if approved. David?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Francis, has anyone signed up? Okay, well, this.
I'm sorry, I thought you were signing. I have to get a question.
You're the applicant?
I'm here, I'm here.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm, there is no protests at the Planning Commission. It was approved unanimously, and it's a conversion of a residential house into a office building, so I, I would move approval. I'm sorry.
Did they get back with you on removal?
We'll need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Warren Wolfencooler, 11309 Greenbrier Chase, Oklahoma City.
No, sir, go ahead, please.
There was a line that was supposed to have been changed in the final SPOUD. Did anyone get with you on that?
No, sir.
Because I was in, talking to Debbie Martin, Martin on this, and she got with Lance and JJ on, on it, and I conversed with them. They were going to remove a line on the master design statement in Section Two, line, item four, no additional parking to be located within the front building setback. That was a TE number three. And after discussing it with them, to save the trees in that area, we were going to remove that line because they want, everybody was really adamant about saving the trees because it's located next to a park and a school.
Right.
And to make adequate parking in there, if I had to abide by that stipulation, I would have to destroy quite a few trees, mature, older mature trees. And the planning division that JJ works for and Mr. Gross, Lance, they agreed that that could be removed. They did not, no one got with anybody on that.
Okay, just a second. Bob, do you, are you familiar with these changes?
No, I'm not.
Okay, but I'd like to recommend that we defer this. I'm sorry you came, you had to come down here, but until we get this resolved, I'd like to move that we defer this.
If you want to move this later in the docket, I can make a call and find out. If you want to do that, we can do it for two weeks.
I'd rather do that, since I've been up here, if we can just.
No, I understand.
Sorry, Bob.
We'll just come back to it, then.
Okay.
All right, we'll just come back to it.
Okay.
See what, see what Bob can find out.
Thank you.
That moves us on to item 9A11, which is a zoning case in Ward Two at 1601 Northwest 45th Street. And Ed, we have one person that's signed up to speak. Okay. Norman Begon?
Good morning.
Morning.
Norman Begon, 1605 Northwest 45th Street, Oklahoma City. This is a primarily a, virtually, the entire neighborhood is an R-1, and with the exception of, of 46th Street, which is right behind where I live. We have behind us on 46th Street a, a group of, of six duplexes, duplex units, which over the course of the years have been rented and sold and rented and sold. There've been periods of time when they've been, two or three of the units have been occupied out of the six. Further down the street, half a block down, there's an apartment complex of 75 low-income apartments. The entire street is a big mistake, and there are no, the, the police are quite familiar with 46th Street. There's been gang activity, there've been shootings, gunfire, rather, I don't know about shootings, I mean gunfire. 46th Street, we're trying to stop that. Seven of the people, of the neighbors, have submitted letters in opposition to this. So you have one person comes in from out of state, sets up office up in Edmund, wants to come down to our community and change the nature of our community. We just don't want, we, we don't want the mistake of 46th Street to, 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 to be compounded by allowing it to expand. There are no, no R-twos on 45th Street or 44th Street or 43rd Street. 43rd Street is actually a historic preservation street. I'm afraid that during the, the fight, when we finally had a vote, after 11 months of having this dragged out, we finally had a vote with the Planning Commission, and I'm afraid that Janice Powers, she's kind of skewed the vote. She influenced the vote by saying, and I wrote it down so I get it right. We had a meeting with the neighbors earlier this week. As a result of that meeting, he agreed to change his application to an R-two. And that's implying that the neighbors had agreed to this. Nothing could be further from the truth. I was at the meeting. Most of the neighbors were not because they got tired, they're tired of this. That's why they're not here today. This has been dragged on, continuance after continuance after continuance, people coming down here, and only to find out that they've wasted their time. This applicant has showed nothing but disrespect for the process, for our time, and for the, for the, for the commission's time. Mr. Mayor, I heard you on the radio four weeks ago proudly stating Oklahoma City rates high on quality of life issues. This is a quality of life issue. Dr. Shadick, I've heard you speak. I, I know that you, you're, you're, you're a supporter of quality of life issues. I'm, you know, I wrote down a few things here. I know I don't want to use a lot of your time. So anyway, the, the scales of justice are in your hands. You can vote for one individual's profit motive who comes in here from out of state, or you can vote for the quality of life issues of the seven people in the neighborhood who submitted letters opposing this. And, you know, I think we have to, I, I, I would ask you to show this out of town or that here in Oklahoma City, we value quality of life issues. Thank you very much for allowing me to represent the people in our neighborhood who couldn't be here today.
All right, thanks, Norman.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
So can you, can you explain how, how you feel it adversely impacts quality of life?
Well, because on 46th Street, where you have, like, the fence that, that separates those units behind me and us, that fence is eighty percent nonexistent. These, these duplexes always end up being rental properties, sold and rented and sold and rented, and, and worst of all, are rent to own, which nobody really is, not, not clear as to who is responsible for maintaining property in that kind of a situation. It affects our quality of life because, for one thing, the, the, the streets are narrow, so there's a parking issue. Right across the street from me, there is, a, a new home was built recently, and it was purchased by a young attorney, his realtor wife with the two, two small children, ages three and eight, and down the street, going north on Blackwelder, just one block, there's a Cheyenne, Cheyenne Properties. They've built so far three modern homes, two of them quite elaborate, one a bit modest. And the whole neighborhood is a single-family development, and, and the extra parking, well, the person across the street from me was recently T-boned crossing Blackwelder because there are so many cars parked on the street, and this woman jumped out of her car. She said, I'm so sorry, I didn't see you. There was a big pickup truck parked, and, and, and she T-boned him. His daughter, who's eight years old, has a friend just across the street, on, on, across the street from, of Blackwelder, who's her age, and, and they're constantly crossing back and forth, and, and there's, there's, there's all kinds of problems with, with parking. Recently, I have a, a letter from Patrick Shadick stating, one of the things he states is, recently, there was a, an emergency where the emergency vehicle couldn't get through the street because the, there were cars parked on the street. It's a narrow street. This emergency vehicle couldn't get through. Consequently, they had to go around the block. Those extra two or three minutes in a life and death situation are, are, are important. These are narrow streets. 46th Street is a much wider street. 46th Street has all these, all these problems with, with, with the, the 46th Street has all these problems with the duplexes and the apartment complex and the gang activity. And we just don't want that spreading.
Norman, I think I hear you're fed up. And...
Thank you.
The others, you can't stop them, but maybe you can stop this one.
That's right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks. And you want to hear from the?
Yes, please.
Develop... Come on up, guys.
Could I just ask a question while he's coming up? Why does it show that we have no protest? It's okay. I really am asking staff. It shows that there are no protests in our memo.
The minutes reflected that there were protests at the Planning Commission. He indicated there is a written protest, but I don't have a copy of it, so...
There are many, many, many protests.
There were.
Arriving down there only to find that the thing had been continued. When I first arrived there for the first meeting, the applicant didn't bother to show up, showed total disrespect. And then at every other subsequent meeting, various people from the neighborhood, various neighbors, came down. I've been down there three times, only to find that it's been continued on to a later date. And other people have come at different times. The family I referred to earlier with the two small children. They even brought their children twice because they had nobody at the time to...
You're not alone. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're understood. Okay. Okay, come on up.
I was gonna see if he'd...
Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Ron McCory. I'm the owner of Ram Real Estate Solutions. My address is 1212 Northwest 188th Street. And just a couple of things that I'd like to address. I did come from out of town. I was from Houston. But I have lived here for almost a couple of years now. And before I moved to Houston, I was working for BP while I was in Houston. But before that, I did go to college and University of Oklahoma as well as high school. So I do have a background in Oklahoma, so it's not like I'm real new here. Second thing I heard was I missed the first meeting. And the reason I missed that first meeting was the city got my email address wrong, so I never got notifications. But I did hear about it, gave them a call. And then I did hear and I did attend future meetings as well.
You've heard his...
That's not true.
You've heard his... You've had your opportunity. Yeah, go ahead. So you've heard his questioning the continual degradation of the quality of life in his neighborhood. How would you respond with this particular zoning aspect?
Right. So my argument for that case is what we're planning to build, I feel, is nicer than what's out there. When we first purchased this property, it was in total ruins. No one could live there. I actually had someone offer to rent out that property. I said, "You don't want to live there. It's dangerous." And they said, "Well, let me just look at it." So I took them to go see it, and she said, "You're right. I can't live here." So before I did anything to that property, me and a partner, we spent about a day and a half talking to various neighbors. We did get 11 signatures to support our initial design. And the initial design was two duplexes for a total of four units. After presenting that to the Planning Commission, there were some concerns by the neighbors at that time, as well as some of the Planning Commission members saying they feel like the density is too great and there's some issues with the parking. So the Planning Commission at that time recommended that we take a step back. We go through the SPUD process and do some more details on the design. So I did do that. We did fill out a SPUD application. And so we went down from four units to two standalone, two-story, single-family homes, which each are approximately 1,464 square feet. Each unit will have one attached garage with a driveway to accommodate two additional parkings. So each unit will potentially have... Each unit will accommodate three parkings. So I feel parking's not an issue in this case. Both units will face Blackwelder, where there was some concern about 45th Street. The garages and the units will be facing Blackwelder. And just to give you just a summary of the footprints. So the unit, even though total, they're 1464 square feet, the actual footprint is about 1,007 square feet. So if you multiply that by 2, that's 2,014 square feet. The land, the plot of land, is 8,220. So if we just look at it from a building perspective, we're talking about a quarter or 25% of that land being used for buildings. So 75% of that land will be open. So I feel like it's... Things won't be built upon.
What's going on this property right now? Is that a viable... Is there a family living in that property that's on the map that I'm looking at?
So it's actually demoed right now. There's nothing on it.
So it's been raised?
Yeah.
It's a green space or it's a lot?
Right. It's just a lot.
Okay.
And so after I went and talked to the neighborhoods and got those 11 signatures...
So you're talking about new construction?
Yeah, new, brand-new construction.
Okay.
But at what point did you demolish the structure in this process?
After I got the signatures. So we spent about a day and a half getting signatures, just talking to the neighbors. Got some signatures. And then after I received those signatures, I went through the city, got my demo permit, and demoed the property. And so after the demo to the Planning Commission, yes, there was some additional protest.
What size is the lot? Is it 50 by 140 or 25 by 140?
The lot size is 137 by 60 feet, which is a total of 8,220 square feet.
60 is a weird number. 60 is an odd number. It would normally be 25 or 50. Bob, is that frontage standard lot size?
The standard single-family is 6,000. So he said he had eight, so it's smaller. But, you know, this area has a lot of situations where they have multiple houses on similar-sized lots. There's R2 zoning across 46th Street and directly north of this property. So typically, for a single-family lot in R1 is 6,000 square feet.
What's the... I mean, what's your goal? Is it to replicate this or this is just a one-time, a one-off? Or you want this to be a business model going forward?
Yeah. Well, I'm always looking for opportunities. So the business that I run is to take distressed properties and either renovate them, demolish them, or create some type of new construction. So as opportunities come up, I look at the area and see what would fit that area. And being that I saw that in this area, there was an R2 north of me. And being in Houston, I saw a lot of new townhomes being developed that were more upper-scale. So that was my initial idea. But after the Planning Commission, we talked about having single-family units that someone could go in and purchase and take ownership of.
So where... So you got 11 signatures to build four units on that property?
Right.
And where do those 11 people live?
I have the sign-in sheet if you want to...
I mean, just generally, where...
Most of them were 45th Street. Some were 46th. And then there were a few on Georgia.
But you must have... Clearly, there's some who are opposed. When you went door-to-door, did you detect that there'd be some opposition?
I did have one individual who was concerned about having four duplexes. But I can't make everyone happy.
So of the 12 doors that you knocked on, 11 were in favor. You had one person who was opposed, and then you took that and demoed the property?
Yes. So, I mean, in summary, I probably went to about 30 to 50 houses because there are a lot of rentals. And my understanding is you want to get signatures from the owners within that area. So we did a lot of knocking on doors, talking to people. And we were turned away by several just because they weren't... They were just rentals.
Did you have a meeting with the neighborhood or did you call a meeting?
Yeah, we did host a meeting with Janice and the neighborhood. A few of the neighbors did attend. And that's where we took it more from multi-unit to single-family units or, yeah, individual, single-family units. And during that meeting, there was also some recommendations to add an 8-foot fence for additional privacy for the neighbors on the west side, as well as adding some opaque windows on the second story. And so we did consider those and we did add those to our SPUD. And we are planning to do them.
So can you not make the return work with a single-family home? Like, I mean, it looks like there were single-family on both sides of 45th. Does that... Make the return work?
Well, so, I mean, it's... The way I look at it is the lot is big. I mean, it's a big lot, 8220. And 25% of it is only going to be covered by the actual building. I mean, 75% of it is going to be open. When I talked to... Just to back up a little bit. But I did speak to Sam Gresham, a local architect here. And one of our designs actually had three units, and he felt comfortable with three units. But again, the Planning Commission and the neighbors were more acceptable to two units, or two standalone units.
I guess the bigger issue is trying to avoid conflict in the future. I mean, there are neighborhoods that love this. Like Meadowbrook Acres would welcome you to buy a property and do something like this. But to get signatures and demo the property before you ever file anything with the city, if that's the business model going forward, seems like we may have more of this conflict coming.
So the idea of talking to the neighbors before I did anything with the property was just to see what the neighbors felt about it, if they would promote it. So if the neighbors, if, like, let's say 25 of the 30 neighbors I talked to said, "There's no way we would accept this," then I wouldn't have even pursued a demo at that time. But again, after talking to those neighbors and getting signatures and support, I felt that there was enough movement or enough acceptance from that community to pursue this project. So I... At that point is when I filed out the demo application and demoed the property.
Can I see the list of the... Like, what that looks like? I mean, I don't... Do you have a response or...
Thank you.
There are literally no neighbors in favor of this right now. Now, it is true. I was out of town at the time. I'm leaving town as soon as I'm leaving here. But what I got from the neighbors was that what he proposed to them was misrepresented. And he said a couple of duplexes. And I think he was calling two duplexes four units, where the neighbors understood it as being two units. Since then, they're so fed up with him that they don't want, you know... They rescinded their agreement to what they signed. There's nobody in that neighborhood right now who wants this thing.
So if you asked these people, Phil Reed, Philip Brown, I can't read their names. I mean, if you asked these people, they'd be opposed?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I walk this neighborhood. I'm a walker. And I know the people in the neighborhood. And there's nobody who isn't in favor of this project. We don't want to see the mistake... Thankfully, the mistake of 46th Street happened before your tenure. And we would ask you not to compound it by allowing it to spread. I don't want to be redundant.
Does anyone on the Council see utility in continuing it? I mean, is there anything that could be accomplished in...
Personally, I would prefer to see it resolved today. I mean, I'm, you know... As I said, this has been going on now for 11 or 12 months of constantly coming... Someone from the neighborhood coming down here.
I guess what's difficult is he's saying there's 11 people that are in favor of it, and you're saying that all these 11 people would now be against it.
Because he misrepresented what he was going to build. That's why he got people to, you know, to sign off on it. There was something else he just lied about, and I can't remember what it is now. I've lost it.
I mean, Ed, in my mind, I think it's important that Janice took the time to set up a meeting and go meet with people and see if they were objecting. And I'm certain that if they would have, Janice would have... We would have had a record of that at the Planning Commission.
Well, there were protesters. And, I mean, Janice is...
There were only protesters at the meeting. There were only three neighbors at the meeting.
He was one.
And I was one. And the person across the street from this proposed project has just bought the house. And he is in the process of renovating it, doing a nice renovation job so that he can sell it. He's not interested in renting it. And he's also concerned that with this thing across the street from him, he's going to have a harder time selling it to somebody who wants, you know, a single-family home in a single-family area. This is a single-family area, with the exception of the mistake of 46th Street, which is really a drastic mistake.
So Janice met with three neighbors. They went to the Planning Commission to ask to have four units.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. Of the three that were there, none of them had signed off.
Right. But it went to the Planning Commission to ask to put four units on the property, and then it got cut back to two at the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Please repeat that.
Originally, the original plan that was brought to the Planning Commission, for which there was a meeting with Janice and three neighbors...
Well, yeah, the four units, when that was first proposed, that was left out of the Planning Commission, as you can imagine. I mean, you know the size of this lot. You can imagine someone had the audacity to want to build four units there. And he cut it down to three. And then three was what was presented at the meeting with the neighbors. And then nobody at that meeting agreed to the three units. And the other people weren't in agreement with it, who did not show up. Otherwise, they would have shown. You know, they just are fed up with this person. They're fed up with this whole process.
Is there any way to modify this to make it better or it's just yes or no, up or down?
I don't see why... I don't see why... It's been R1 forever. And the original planners planned it in R1 for a reason. It's a small community, narrow streets, small lots. These are small lots. And in order for someone to want to increase the density, it seems to me they have to show how that's going to improve the community, not deteriorate the community.
What does the comprehensive plan say?
Comprehensive plan supports mix of single-family and duplex. It's... When staff reviewed this, they didn't identify any compatibility issues with what was proposed and what was existing there. So, yeah, the comprehensive plan is supportive of a mix of duplex and single-family as long as you determine it's in the right location.
And how would you determine it's in the right location?
Well, you'd look at existing patterns. And there are two existing R2 zone pieces. One directly north of here, and then another one across the street. And then you can see south, there's a couple of locations where there's already two single-family houses on one lot, which are probably non-conforming. So as far as staff was concerned, the original application was for a straight R2. And then after he came to the commission, they recommended a SPOD, which is what he did. And then after the hearing, he actually reduced it down to two single-family on that lot. And, you know, for...
So essentially, it still is single-family. It's just R2-based because it takes up...
Because it is.
Because it's two on one lot.
Right. It's on an 8,200-square-foot lot, two houses. And, you know, if there's parking issues in the area, that's really a traffic commission. You know, they could look at no-parking signs to try to control the traffic issues. But as far as the comp plan is, it would support this.
Ed, excuse me, do you happen to know of any of the issues such as the amount of crime that occurs in that area?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Does the Council have any other thoughts? I mean, I'm conflicted. I don't... And I definitely look for direction.
I mean, I see it as a land use... I mean, I, I see it as a land use issue, and when you got R2 in the area and R1, and to, for, for us to say that you can't have R2 right next to R1, I mean, well, what can go next to R1 then?
Yep.
If R2 can't go there? And considering that it's just going to be a base R2, but it's not actual duplexes, it's still two, you know, two-story, single-family homes, how that's not compatible with a single fa, uh, single-story, single-family home? I'm struggling to find where we can say that the property owner can't do what he's saying he wants to do. So, that's just my, that's just my steer, but I'm, I would be totally cool with them having another meeting and trying to have a concession or whatever, but if you want an up or down vote now, I, I don't see how we can have...
Well, I'm leaving town.
I don't see how we can have a down vote on this, but...
Personally, I'm leaving town. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a singer, and I'm, I'm, I'm heading down to Dallas as soon as I leave here, and I'll be gone for a couple of months, and so...
I think the applicant wanted to say one more thing.
Is it okay if I walk forward?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. So, in, in, in that packet that I sent you, I do show a, a picture of the property that we're presenting, as well as some elevations, and what you'll see is what we're proposing is nicer than what's in that area. That's all I have to say.
But I'm just, Ed, I'm struggling.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't see, I mean, it is a neighborhood of single-family houses almost consistently, and I'm not sure why we need to start doing this type of infill densities in these, oh, I'm sorry. I just, I just think it's very consistent, yeah, very consistent as a single-family neighborhood. I do think there are other places that it would be easier to do this than here.
Right.
I, I, I'm not, I agree with James, I think it's hard to figure out how we say no, you know, if they both face Blackwelder, and if they both have a garage, and it doesn't create a parking issue, and it meets the plan.
Yeah.
I have trouble with, but, but my gut is, I wish it were a single-family house, and I didn't, we didn't get an answer to the question of whether or not the economics would work on a single-family house. I think it probably would.
Yeah.
I mean, the way I come out on it, I see the R2 apartments to the north, I see the R2 duplexes across the street on 46th. I know Janice's detail at which she operates, and she conducted a meeting, and she convinced this person to go from four units to two units. I looked at the planning commission's vote, and everybody voted for it, and followed...
Two, two voted against.
Oh, did? Okay. I'm sorry. Well, Janice voted for it.
And Janice was conflicted. So, I mean, it's not easy.
It, it can lead, I mean, I think that the gentleman's argument about moving it down from 46th to 45th to 40, I mean, I think you could begin to see that deterioration, and that maybe is what I'm more concerned about, is how it sets a pattern for this.
Well, I, I just, I'm with, assuming that it's deteriorating, deteriorating, I mean, but, but that is, but your statement, you're saying on what some of the, as, towards law, if you're building two new properties, single-family properties, that are going to be of better quality in the western area, I don't, I don't see how that will drive down the, the structure.
Well, I, I, I don't know that that's all helpful and pertinent. Ed, I think we probably ought to move forward with something.
You have a thought?
I, I think, unfortunately, based on the current use pattern, I think that, that the zoning falls in with what we have typically done and allowed. I don't like the fact that his neighborhood, you know, appears to be going in the direction he doesn't like, but new construction is not the worst thing in the world if it's done correctly, so.
So I, I, I think I will very reluctantly vote for it. I, I, I'm imploring you, you know, if this is going to be a business model going forward, and you're just going into neighborhoods where you see distressed properties, and that, that you really pick one where you've got almost, you know, it has unanimity, but, but not so much opposition directly around, I'll, I'll move for approval.
All right, cast your votes. Pass seven, or eight to one. All right, we are now on, Bob, you returned from the room. Did that previous item that we skipped, that, is that ready to go? Item 9A10?
I think it is ready to go.
Yes, JJ, inform me, appears the amended document is the one in front of you, so it's already been amended.
Okay.
He was just confused about the...
You want to make a motion, David?
Well, could I have some clarification?
Yes, sir.
Bob, could you explain, or, as to what we're, what has changed now?
Okay, there's a, off a pin, you have a 100-foot right away from center of the road, 100, 60-foot of that being on the east side, which is directly in front of the property. They wanted an additional setback of 25-foot beyond that, which had actually put setback up to the front of the house, so they'd want all the parking to be on the sides of the houses or around the back. And, but they also wanted another technical evaluation of saving all the existing mature trees on, on the property, and if you abide by that 25-foot additional setback for parking, there's no way you could save those trees, you'd have to tear them out to put in parking.
Okay.
So if we do away with that 25-foot setback, we can, we can accommodate saving all the trees on the property as they are now.
Okay, I'm okay with that. I go, I jog over there on that track at the park. It's a great area, and, and those trees...
Right.
Spike loves those, so I'll let her go out to them at times by herself, and I'd hate to see those taken down. So, I'll agree with the modification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9A10. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, 9A12 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 4,800 South Sunny Lane Road. It's currently in a spud, and it would be in a new spud if approved. Pete?
Is, is there anyone speaking in opposition to it? I move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A13 is a zoning case in Ward 1 at 11900 Northwest Expressway. It's currently double A, and it would become a new spud if approved. James?
Yeah, this spud is to allow Mercy Health to build a health complex out at Northwest Expressway and Piedmont Road. It's got a C3 base. Unanimous planning commission approval, and there have been no protesters, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A13. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is a modification in a pud on, in Ward 4. Pete, you okay with this?
Yes, I'm okay. I'd move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9AC would close a street in Ward 7. John, you okay with this?
Yeah, so the planning commission approved it. I move for approval.
Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Bill Collins here on behalf of the applicant on item...
On which item is that?
Item C, the one you just passed.
Yeah.
Could we please have the emergency passed? The reason for this is, Pat Garrett, who's here with me, recently hauled off 30 loads of trash, and one of the reasons we filed this application was so we could close the street, to keep people from dumping on this ground, and that's been, so it cost me about $9,000 to haul off the trash, and this happens about two or three times a year. So if you could pass the emergency ordinance, we can go ahead and close the street off right away.
All right.
It's ready to be fenced now.
We don't often grant that, but I'll fall to the council's preference. Is there a, a motion on the emergency?
I, I'd move it. There were, there were no protests, right? Nobody, I, I'd move it.
All right, cast your votes, and the emergency gets...
Thank you very much.
So, hold on, hold on, you got to get, okay, there's eight, eight zero.
Pete, can I record that you actually supported an emergency?
I was, my, my concern is supporting emergencies when they're protests, because it cuts the time off for the protestant to file an action.
All right, next...
Yes, you can put that down.
Next has to do a, a, a closing of a, of a, of a street in the Wheeler District. Meg?
I would move approval.
Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E would help us in the collection efforts of our hotel and motel taxes. This item's just being introduced today.
Right, Bob, behind Killis here, and he'll just give a real brief explanation of it.
Morning, Mayor, Council. I've been asked to provide a brief overview of the hotel tax ordinance changes before you today. As payments by debits and credit cards continue to be more and more prevalent, this has also resulted in increasing costs for the city's general fund for payment of processing fees. This administrative change will provide for the implementation of a service charge to offset the city's costs for accepting hotel tax payments by credit or debit card. Service charges collected will then be directed back to the general fund to offset the cost. So what are the rules and laws that allow for the assessment of a service charge? Special allowances in place, and has been made by the credit card associations, meaning Visa, MasterCard, Discover, but specifically for taxes, so as not to be confused with charging a convenience fee. This allowance stems from the, a federal statute prohibiting the IRS from paying costs associated with accepting credit card payments. By statute, the state of Oklahoma also adds a service charge for the use of paying taxes using a card for the very same reason. Also by statute, the city is authorized to collect taxes in the same manner as a state. In essence, if a hotel has paid its sales taxes to the Oklahoma Tax Commission using a credit card, they've already been exposed to a similar type of fee. Fees will be charged only to recoup the cost of covering the processing of payments. The 2.22% fee that's being proposed is actually slightly less than what it costs the city to process those card payments. This fee will be reviewed periodically to ensure it remains equal to or is less than the cost that's actually incurred by the city. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Bob, why are we not charging the actual cost? I mean, why did we set it at 2.2?
The costs will vary throughout the year because of all the different layers of credit card interchange fees.
Okay.
So we review it periodically just to make sure we're staying in the ballpark.
This item's just being introduced today. It'll be up for a public hearing on March 14th and in final adoption on March 28th. Thanks, Bob. All right, 9F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9F? All right, is there a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9...
Mayor, we didn't actually take a vote on E. It was on the introduction of that ordinance, and then we should vote on that.
Move the items.
Oh, you're right. Okay, this was the item that was introduced that, that Bob was taking us through. All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll do that on 9E. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now, I believe we're on 9I?
I.
Okay. This is a public hearing regarding removal of properties from the abandoned buildings list. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on either of those items?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9J is a resolution that would request that the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns can place a privately funded plaque near the southwest corner of this building in honor of committee member Pam Henry for her continued work on our sidewalk system and, and on that committee. Is there a, a motion on this item?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9K is a, a presentation from Kim Cooperhart to talk about the assessment district and the filing fee for those assessment districts. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and his manager. This amendment, it's resolution amends two prior amendments that were from 1985 and 1989 that set filing fees for special improvement districts. Along with the special improvement districts in the state statute is also the ability for the city to have business improvement districts. As you know, I work with business improvement districts, they're not construction-based, they're services districts, and the filing fees that were set up in these prior resolutions were designed to re, for the city to be able to recoup its costs for upfront engineering fees, say if they're building a sidewalk or even a private water system, and there's a lot of engineering fees that go into that type of improvement district. This resolution not only removes the requirement for business improvement districts to do filing fees where we have no upfront costs such as those, but it also allows for the city engineer to set a new filing fee for the construction-based improvement districts so that those fees can be recovered by the city should the district be protested out.
Okay.
So you can see what the big concern is, you spend $50,000, and you get it to the public process, and then people vote it down.
Right.
Yeah, so we're trying to avoid that.
All right.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
And I know we're running long, but the special assessment districts, say for example, you have a neighborhood, and they wanted to assess themselves for certain things such as traffic signage, et cetera. Would that then require a neighborhood to pay $10,000 to do that?
I think I'll have Eric help with that question, because that falls into his wheelhouse.
We've never set up an assessment district for something like that.
We've looked, I know there are several neighborhoods that have looked at it, including one that's looking at it right now for some, dealing with some water issues.
But with the, was, over, with the water district, clearly we've done it. It was a sign or something, my guess. They agreed to pay for a sign, they just paid for the sign, it wouldn't be assessed, and it wouldn't be a role and, and interest and all that.
But I know, for example, a, a neighborhood that wanted, they had like, I'm making the number up, it was either 28 or 32 points of ingress and egress, and they wanted to make it where, like in Hardee Chills, you could only go out and not back in, and they were looking at assessing themselves, so that could be done...
That's traffic control, physical improvements, yeah.
And, 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 and I know that they've, also, some neighborhoods have looked at that for issues of, of, of traffic control. And, and so I just don't want some neighborhood to get hit with a $10,000 fee when they can barely afford to do what they're trying to do, just to protect their, their neighborhood.
So I think to support the comments from the city manager, we, we haven't received any assessments for traffic control, and we, we're able to work with the neighborhoods individually on those. We do one to two assessments that are predominantly for streets, when they need to upgrade streets or converting them from private to public. The average cost that we're seeing is about $10,000. There's no funds in city accounts that have allowed us to move that forward, it's been difficult. So, we, on traffic issues, we'd like to work directly with them. I would be surprised if it would turn into a, an assessment district, because the costs are so much lower. For signage and for traffic modifications versus a complete upgrade.
All I want to be clear on is, if the neighborhood tries to do something to better the neighborhood for safety purposes, they're not going to get assessed $10,000 engineering fee.
No, that's not the intent.
Mark, I mean, we talked about it with sidewalks in Miller Neighborhood. You know, if they were going to replace all the sidewalks in the neighborhood, it was going to take a ton of engineering on the part of the city, and so in the case that they established a special assessment district for that project, that would require this kind of a fee.
If it was a complete sidewalk replacement program, yes.
Could, could we at least have the resolution give some discretion, or, that leaves it in the hands of, of, of public works to decide?
Well, how about if we have it, then we, we bring it back to council for, for decision, instead of laying that on staff. We come back, and if council wants to waive it, we can have the ability to do so.
Do you want to defer it for two weeks?
Sure.
Is that necessary to defer it?
Well, it might be cleaner if we just do it and put it into the resolution. Sure.
What we're talking about is that, that, that there's the ability to come before council and have that fee waived.
Yes.
Okay, so is that an amendment?
Yes.
We could do that, we could amend that, I believe, and...
Amendment on the floor, sir? We can, but have to have language for it. Why don't we bring that back in two weeks?
Okay.
Just make sure, Kim, does that impact you for your bid renewals?
No, this will be part of the, of the deferral. I don't have any bid renewals or, excuse me, new business improvement districts that we'll be hitting in the next two weeks, so I feel comfortable coming back. Thank you, Megan.
Okay.
All right, how about a motion to March 14th?
So moved.
All right, cast your votes, and that item is deferred. And that item is deferred. All right, item 9F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of those items? All right, how about a motion?
A motion.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding...
We're, Mayor, we're, the next item is L, the Amateur Softball Association.
You're right. I didn't turn the page correctly. All right, item 9L, I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
Do not.
All right.
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9M is claims recommended for denial.
We did have one signed up.
Efren Gong? All right. Is there a motion on item 9M?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any item listed under item 10? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council, and this is, solidifies the new schedule of meetings that we discussed before. This is a public hearing. Rick, I take it you're not here to discuss the, the schedule of the meetings?
I'm here to speak to...
Okay. Then how about a motion then to move item 11A forward?
Move the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 12 is city manager reports. Oh wait, items from council. Let's go around the room. Ed?
Just maybe if we can have staff look at the payday lending issue, maybe it'll be taken care of the legislature. But every city council in Texas, I think, except with Fort Worth, has, their city councils have acted. I mean, for all I know, we're preempted from doing anything, but if we can research that and figure out if we can do anything and what best practices are. I would say one other thing, maybe out of desperation, just things are so bad at the legislature, watching that, floating that trial balloon of the Godzilla preemption bill and the legislator saying, talking about our council and the Tulsa City Council is going rogue and things like that, which begs the, if you're going to use the Star Wars lore, that that would make them the evil empire and us rogue. But it is so bad in terms of preemption. I think they've floated that. I mean, they'll just keep floating it. I don't see it changing anytime soon. I think that, again, really out of desperation, I would say, I think the city needs an advocate in either the governor's position or the lieutenant governor's position. And we should interview the candidates as they start to come forward, figure out an advocate and get behind that person. Because I just don't see the legislature changing anytime soon. And I think that's really our only chance to stem the tide of that kind of legislation. It's like we're going two steps forward and one back because of our legislature. Thanks.
All right, Larry? Pete? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank city manager Couch and the staff for coming out last week at the GO bond presentation that we had at the Pioneer Southwest Oklahoma City Library. I know they've been doing that a lot, and it takes time away from them and their families, whether it's the evenings or on weekends. And so I appreciate all of their assistance with that, as well as all the citizens who attended. And I would like to encourage all of the citizens throughout the city to go to the okc.gov/geo section of our website and make sure you take the survey. Your votes will help in deciding what projects will be included in the upcoming general obligation bond vote this summer, so it's a great way to speak your mind and have input. The other thing I'd like...
On that point, I think today may be the last day for...
They got to do it today.
They got to do it today.
Oh.
For the surveys.
Well, thank you. I did not know that. Thank you. The other item I'd like to mention is there's an event. I want to make sure no one misconstrues this as a protest. There's an event occurring Saturday morning. It's being coordinated by a group of churches mainly in South Oklahoma City. It's a walk. It's a prayerful, prayerful walk, beginning at the school on Southwest 52nd and South Penn, the Santa Fe South Charter School. And individuals will walk from there down to downtown Oklahoma City. I think they'll conclude at Front Line Church on Broadway. But again, it's, I think it begs to emphasize that it's not a protest, it's just a request to look at the issue of immigration from a prayerful, prayerful or biblical perspective and to consider all aspects of the issue. And it begins at 8:00 AM, so get your walking shoes on. Thank you.
All right.
Very quickly, Mayor, I just want to thank the Plaza District for their invitation to address the state of the Plaza last night. The statistics about the continued growth down there are just extraordinary. In a year, there are 10 new businesses, from 45 to 55. We've got a couple of new restaurants opening in the next couple of weeks, a new breakfast place down there called Aurora and a restaurant called Press, which is a new concept of the guys at the Mule and the Gourmet Corn Dog Restaurant, Anchorage Town, over in Bricktown. It just is so inspiring. And Councilman McAtee chairs the Economic Development Committee, and yesterday we had 20 presentations, I think, from different commercial revitalization districts that Kim Cooperhart leads. And it's really wonderful to see the more tour districts providing the kind of advice that they can for those that are thinking about starting out. We had folks that are, you know, over near the Native American Cultural Center that are thinking about creating some kind of an artist district. And it's just really nice to see the cross pollination with all of the neighborhoods and how this is impacting the city so positively.
John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is the last general obligation bond workshop, and it's going to be held from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So I want to encourage everyone who have not had the opportunity to attend one of the workshops to please attend tonight. Again, it's going to be from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Metro Tech Technology Center.
All right, Mark?
Very quickly, CNBC Business recently rated the top 15 cities in the United States for retirement purposes under certain qualifications. And Oklahoma City was not 15th, not 10th, not 5th, but number one. And today at 2:00, we have the first senior in health and wellness center ribbon cutting at 11501 North Rockwell. And it is a beautiful facility. I was there last night. We've had, the last two weeks have been pretty hectic, trying to get everything done on time and coming under the wire, but it is an unbelievable facility, and I would encourage people to not only come today for the ribbon cutting, but also to join and become a member. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. City manager reports?
Just want to point out the February sales and use tax report is in there. It was not good, and we're hopeful that Russell Evans is right as we go forward with his, his forecast for the next year.
All right, and it's citizens be heard. Rick, thanks for being so patient. We ask people to keep their comments to three minutes, but we'd love to hear from you. Yeah, you're it.
I'm Rick Dahl, 601 North Walker, Oklahoma City. What I'm here for is to...
Rick, can you talk right into the microphone? We're having some trouble hearing you.
Okay, can you hear now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Okay, what I'm here for is, we have a, if you go back to 2008, or no, I think it was 2010, there was some money that came down from the Obama administration, the so-called stimulus money, if you had a shovel-ready project. And it had to do with environmental problems. Anyway, we had a 20-story building in downtown Oklahoma City that had an environmental problem that was considered the worst of the state. It was estimated by the federal government would cost $10 million to solve this problem. We were able to do it for $2 million. Anyway, to make a long story short, we got $1 million, I think it was $1,800,000 of the Obama administration money from the federal government. It was administered through the city at the city's discretion as to how they wanted to operate the money. Now, since that time, we have paid back the city $1 million in interest and principal. There's $997,000 left that is due on this loan, and it's due tomorrow. I had hoped we would get this loan extended, and I had hoped I could get it on the city council agenda, but unfortunately, it just didn't work out that way. I didn't find out that our loan request was denied until it was too late to approach you guys directly. So that's what I'm doing now. And I will say this, maybe you're focused on many things that cost hundreds of millions of dollars, and a lot of things are going on, but I will say this. Number one, the removal of the First National Building as an office building is taking 1 million square feet of office space off the market. That office space was available at much lower rents than what would be available through new construction. For example, a new office building, you're going to have to get $35 a square foot for the, the owner to make any money. The building that we have is going to be able to keep that rent to way less than half that. The First National Building certainly had rents that were much lower than that. Now, having office space available to small business, because small business, Devon Energy only had 10 people working for it 25 years ago, and it's a $20 billion company. We had a small business at one of the places we started over there on Walker that started with 20 people there, and they just sold it for $45 million. What will happen is if this loan is not renewed, is we're going to have to cancel this project. And obviously, I don't want to keep you guys, you've been in a very long meeting, and I don't want to belabor it, but what I would ask you to do is if you could agree to put this on the council agenda, and it would just, as I understand it, would take any counselor to do this, and I'll abide by whatever decision you make in the next meeting, and if you want your $997,000 back, we'll pay it. But we will have to stop the project if that's the case. So all I'm requesting is that you put this on the next council agenda so at least it can be discussed, and then, and then a decision can be made by all of you as to whether it's worthwhile to continue this project. Thank you.
Now, this is, Rick, really, we appreciate you coming down. I tried to reach your office a couple of times to say this is the right way to do this, come down and request that this be put on the agenda. I do think there are a couple of things, and manager or mayor, we can decide whether we want to put it on the agenda and then talk about it, or if we want to talk about it now. Mayor?
John's going to finish the meeting for me, so...
Okay. So, John? You know, I don't know whether this is the right forum, I guess. You know, the request that Mr. Dahl made is to put it on the agenda. I certainly would make a motion to do that so we could talk about it. Or we can, city manager, talk about it now. I know that...
Well, the terms of the agreement are, the terms of the existing agreement that were extended back in 12 call for, for the payments to be due. We're not calling anything. The loan agreements are for the payments to be due on the 1st of March, which is tomorrow.
So, Rick, my understanding is a couple of things. One, that this was not primarily stimulus dollars, that the money was primarily sourced from our brownfields grants. And those loans are a part of a revolving fund that we anticipate putting to work and then having repaid. And I personally am aware that we have extended the due date for this loan, city manager, three times?
Several times.
Several times. And that last year, when we went through this, that the manager's office was very clear that we weren't going to extend it again. And we need those dollars to help us do additional projects in addition to yours. And so, you know, that really was the basis of the decision here. I don't think there was any misunderstanding from our end or from yours that the final extension date was given last year.
Counselor, this has been a very long meeting, and I'm sure the rest of you are ready for a break. I hardly want to prolong this thing. But let me just say this. First of all, it was stimulus money. I'd be glad to discuss that with you personally. Secondly, the prolonging has been due to a number of factors. Number one, the building, we, we had no way for the, if we developed the building, for anyone to be able to park there. We had, we had a parking crisis here in Oklahoma City that started about five years ago. So we got in a position, I had to spend $3.5 million building a garage, which we didn't anticipate. Of course, now it turns out, we don't have a parking crisis, but we could hardly know that. The second thing is, right now, there is a, a legislation pending which would tax real estate, rent, and all of the inputs involved in construction, which would probably put half of our competitors out of business if it were to go through. And, and all of these headwinds have made it very difficult to finance buildings that are currently vacant, which this one is. Now, our plan is, is to, with or without this money, proceed, but we're going to have to delay probably for about another 18 months. I would think that this project going on right now in the middle of downtown Oklahoma City, especially with the office space no longer available at the First National Building, is critical. And...
But, Rick, I think I could, I could flip that conversation to say there's more need than ever for your building to happen, and so it will be a very successful project for you to do. And it has remained vacant a lot longer than I think we all anticipated. I certainly, personally, want to thank you for all of the great work you've done downtown. You and I have toured your buildings. You fill a very important niche in the city. But I think with regard to this particular loan, it's my opinion that the city has worked with you on a consistent and fair basis for longer than would normally be expected, and that it is time for us to be able to realize our expectation, which is to be repaid.
Well, I think our opinions are often a result of the information that we possess. Unfortunately, you and I have never had a discussion over this issue, and I think if we were to have a discussion, I could probably change your point of view.
No, we did discuss it...
And that's what I'd like the opportunity to do.
We did discuss it a year ago, so...
Jim, have, has your office, you made a recommendation, right, that it be repaid?
Right, and I've, Mr. Dahl's, the term of the, of the agreement is due tomorrow on it. The, the agreement was renegotiated a couple of times. The last time it was renegotiated, it was very clear, and he signed off the fact that it would not be renegotiated again. We have other folks that would like to have that money. He met, I met with, with Mr. Dahl 10 days ago, probably, reviewed it with my staff, came back and said, you know, we really think we, since we've really renegotiated further than we wanted to to start with, it's important to get those revolving loans back in for other, other uses as we go on down the line. And so I have denied his request for, for an extension.
Yes, so Mr. Couch, I, unfortunately, I'm not in a position to refute what you're saying in this particular forum. All I can say is this, that our company has received no money whatsoever from the taxpayer of this city or the county, unlike our competitors. And we have managed to redo 300,000 square feet of office space. It's moved 900 people into downtown that weren't here previously with a payroll of $45 million. The garage we just built with no aid whatsoever from the city, unlike the other garages that are being constructed in the city with considerable help from the city, is giving the city $360,000 in, in sales tax over the next 10 years. So we have not been a person here with our hand out asking for money. This is federal money. It's at your discretion what to do with it. And I think if, if you were properly informed on this issue, you would have no problem granting us an extension on this loan so that we can continue this project. But I'll be, whatever you decide to do, I mean, you know, it's your decision. If, if no one on the council wants to put this on the agenda, I guess that's it. We'll pay the loan off tomorrow, and we'll halt the project, whatever you want to do.
I think the meeting's already been adjourned somehow. I'm not taking...
I'm not taking this lightly.
I mean, I would defer to the city manager's recommendation. I'm not willing, I don't, I'm ready for it to be repaid, as you were saying.
Again, I so respect the work that Rick has done in downtown Oklahoma City, and you have done it without any other assistance. You've generated all the things that you said you have, but in this particular case, we have rules, the, the money that comes to us from the federal government comes with...
There are no rules that prevent you from doing what I've asked, so let's just leave it at that. I am very hurt by this, I must say. But that's just, I'm going to leave it at that.
All right, we have adjourned.
We're done.
Oh, we, we have first who have signed up, Mr. Washington. Oh, we have persons who have signed up, Mr. Washington.
Good morning, I have paperwork coming in, oh man, I have no respect, none of you. I'm being mad. None of you.
You don't need to talk to us.
My name is Michael C. Washington, Chief Paralegal, Empower People Inc., where our motto is change your world and your world will change around you. You can best believe that this city council is a mark and a farce, a joke, and I have my rights under the First Amendment, I would not bite my tongue, get ready. You're a poor excuse of a group of people, and you're denying us our rights as citizens? You want to keep all your money downtown because maybe some of your pockets are being pawned? Well, let me tell you all something, you're not going to silence me because I have a right, Mr. Jordan, under the First Amendment to United States Constitution, Oklahoma Constitution, Article 267 of Oklahoma Constitution, for due process right to be heard, not just at this citizen's to-be-heard stance. I have a right to question, unless y'all change y'all's rules, everything that you put forth on this floor today, and for the most part, I'd like for the record to be known that I'm sending my notice of intent to sue every one of you for violating recklessly and intendedly violating my right to speak on the issues as a citizen of the state of Oklahoma. I want you all to understand one more thing, too, that as far as I'm concerned, there's the money that's being directed here downtown, it's going to be directed back to our neighborhoods and not to the so-called rich and wealthy people who in turn are being given the money because they so-called have money to have matching funds. Now, I want to ask the question, and I want to ask the question of the people while I was here, again, y'all disrespecting, I'm going to file a lawsuit on you about. I want to ask this so-called guy who wanted to do this convention center, okay? I want to know, if I don't have big money, would I be excluded from renting parts of the building out? Well, now, I have to ask you that because I can't ask him, isn't that something? Uh huh. Well, let me tell you all something, this here, we're going to hold this chamber hostage, and I don't mean physically speaking, I mean in the courtrooms, because you people have shown a blatant disregard because a person doesn't believe the way you do, he shouldn't be heard. Are you serious, man? I mean, what kind of society are we living in? We live in a society where you people matter, your word is concerned? Are you serious, man? I don't like chocolate milk, you may do, but does that make me not like you and not let you speak? No, sir, it doesn't. And you got one guy today, you're not going to control and make me believe in your manner of accepting things, because if I don't believe, sir, I'll put it on a stack of bibles, I do not believe and will not accept it. This is absurd for you to think that I can, in three minutes, I can talk about all the issues that come before, so in other words, you can briefly talk, Mr. Washington, everything that's been said in three minutes? Are we really serious? What world are y'all living in? What world are y'all living in? I live here in America, I live in a common sense world myself, okay? And like I said, personally speaking, though, I don't hate any of you, your mannerisms is what I hate. There's no kind of way I would hold you back because I don't agree with you. Oh, that's hurting, quiet him up because he's interfering with what people here think? Come on, y'all. Come on now, this is the world that we live in, I cannot speak on every issue in three minutes. And like I said, with this notice of intent to sue every one of you, we're going to ask the Supreme Court to tell me if that's a fact. Michael Washington, don't just talk, ask that man I sued right there. When I tell you I'm going to do something, you might as well etch it in stone. And not only that, I'm going to find out some personal investigations on a lot of you now, you've opened a Pandora's box. Let me just make that point clear. Because I feel that there are certain things that you're doing, limiting me as a citizen or a taxpayer who pays his dues to society, who gives back to the community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Washington.
Thank you very much. And again, let me go get this filed and I'll-
Three minutes is up. And we have adjourned.
I'll be back and get y'all's copy.